All right. Call the budget hearing to order. Commissioner Smith, you give us the prayer and the pledge, please.
I'll just sum that to the prayer. I probably have to come once again. Thank you for the many blessings on the story upon us. Thank you, Rob, for this opportunity to be service of this. As we now prepare for this budget here, we ask for Lord to lead, guide, and direct our path. That all of us should say and do pleasing and accept in your sight. And for the benefit of the citizens that we serve, in that Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Jim Hitt, come on up.
Get right into this. I'm the community development director. So I have two divisions. No longer have engineering, that's now down to public services. That's one of the main differences between this year's and last year's budget. I don't know if you all were able to open this up. I did do a summary that I just handed out that had the budget from 2022, 2023, and the proposed budget for 2024, which has the percentage differences. One of the big things is that the previous year, we had been short-staffed. As you know, we had a couple of people that went to the private industry. One person, who's back? Went over to Lake County and came back because he knew it's better here. But anyway, so we did get two new hires. One person is, came down from Chicago and is our new planner. That's Amir Hamza. And then we have another planner, starting in July 31st, that we will be up to speed. It's a little bit of training to learn about APAPCA. And we are... Oh, yeah. And so we're getting up to speed again, which is extremely nice for Gene especially because she basically was holding down the fort for the projects. And she was able to put on that silo and be able to kind of concentrate on the projects as they're coming through. So the first part, personnel costs, they're going to be up slightly from last year. We're still actually less than 2022. And then the operating expenses, we did, we are increasing one of the primary funds, which is the other contractual services. And that's due to the number of properties that we've had to do surveys for, appraisals for. We've had a couple of different studies that were completed. And then the other one that is probably going to end up increasing is some of the legal fees that we've got to do, along with advertising fees for advertising all the different public, legal land use changes and zoning changes that are required, you know, to go in the paper. The capital outlay, some of that is up for discussion. We do have, I believe it's $20,000 in there that we, I thought that was actually going to be taken out, but that had to do with, we're going to create a secondary office for our planning, for our office manager. And that, so that could possibly go away with this budget change. So this is the overall personnel cost. As you can tell, last year's budget was $912,000. It was 1467 total. This year is up to $1,015,000. 22 budget was $1,076,000. Had a whole lot of change, obviously. We've got a pretty slim budget. Don't have to, we don't have to worry about level of services for this. The primary thing with this is just being able to process the plans and applications on time, on a timely manner, which we've been doing pretty good. So as I mentioned, one of the other things that we do have is that last year, we did get an electric vehicle. I traded, we got two electric vehicles in for the department as a whole. And I traded out one of our Ford Escorts for building and put in an electric vehicle into planning and zoning. So that will end up saving a little bit overall cost because it is a brand-new car. It does, it is electric. And we were able to work with the charging station outside. The provider is currently Shell that is actually holding the lease for that. And we've got that for no charge for our two vehicles that we have in the department now. So it does not cost us a penny for that. Saves on gas, for sure, and electric costs. So other than those, any questions on planning? I can come back, of course, but I can pop over to building if that's okay.
Any questions for Jim on planning?
Can I just make one statement?
Sure.
And that is that I am literally coming in cold. We just got this budget. We were unable to kind of review
Yes.
this budget. So I just want to kind of say that.
Yeah, last year's, like I mentioned, last year's budget was, this is almost a mirror image. We did increase the contractual services because we are running short on money for that. And so that's why we added about, I think it was an extra $100,000 into that.
So on your, the only question, on your staff last year, what did you have? How many planners did you have last year?
We were short three planners. We had it in the budget, we just couldn't, nobody was, nobody was coming in to hire that was qualified.
How many planners did we have on staff at that?
It was just Gene and myself, pretty much.
So it was just one planner?
Yes, yeah.
For most of the budget here?
Yes.
And how many do you need? What's that, four is?
It's four total, including our planning manager, which is Bobby.
Which is who?
Bobby.
Oh, Bobby, he just returned.
Yep.
And is four enough for what we have?
I believe so at this stage, yes. We also, last year, we did hire another secretary, which is Emily. And she is, she's handling, she's working with Aaron Arnold, our office manager, working primarily on BTRs, or business tax receipts, right now. We're getting her fully trained with that. She's already answering phone calls, questions, processing those, along with Mary Denizard, who's our other main secretary for the department. So we've got, we've got a really, we've got a full staff right now, which is, it's been a very, very big help.
And you don't feel with the very massive projects we have coming on, that this will be overwhelming? Do you feel that what we have now?
For processing plans and everything, I believe we are, we're good right now.
Is the BTR specialist, is she part-time or full-time?
She's part-time until October 1st, and then she'll coming out, she'll be coming in on full-time.
So she's part-time right now, but then on 10/1, she'll be full-time?
Yes.
And then are we, is this, does community development include the CRA? Is that budgeted?
No, CRA is a totally different budget.
Okay, so we'll...
It's actually processed separately. It's got its own, everything is separate for that. That's according to Florida statutes, we can't mix money.
Okay.
So is the secretaries and the planning manager included in your personnel costs?
Yes.
All right, so I guess I'm just trying to figure it out. You say you only had one planner last year, and you spent $912,000. And we're planning on having four planners this year, but that's only an increase of $100,000.
We actually used some of those funds to pay for the Kimberley Horn people to come in and do contractual services. We transferred money from salaries into the contractual services in order to pay Kimberley Horn. They were doing a permit review and processing for permits. And some of our comp plan information, too.
So that's right, you did use Kimberley Horn last year.
Yes.
Right, how many did we bring in from Kimberley Horn?
We had, at one point, we had three different, three different people coming in. Typically, it was two different people. Sometimes they were coming in, at the beginning, they were coming in about four days a week. And as of late, they, as of late, they've been, they have one or twice, once or twice a week at the very most. And that's even been cut back because Amir's been actually coming right on board and doing a lot of the reviews for the permits. He's been doing a good job.
The city retirement contribution seems like it's in half for '23. Is there any reason for that? Is that budget for '23 that we budgeted? And then we're, still, it's lower than '22 and '21 for... I guess, talk to me about retirement. Again, to Commissioner Blasko's point, this is the first time we're seeing this. So you're getting a lot of, just as they come up, I'm going to ask them.
How did you get into this?
And I actually can't, you know, a lot of the things regarding the retirement taxes and life and health insurance, those are questions that HR would probably be more, or finance would be more attuned to answering those questions.
And you said that $20,000 or $55,000 for the capital outlay was going to be for an office. What about the other $30,000?
That's the part I'm really not sure on because there's some intangible assets in there. What are those? No, there's nothing, there's nothing on that line. Yeah, that's the $35,000.
It says intangible assets, or something you had to key in. So it was an intangible asset, it could be your software.
I was supposed to say, is it like software, anything like that?
Software, that's the RC, the RAS, mapping software. Thank you.
Is that a one-time expense or something that's annual?
I believe that's a one-time expense.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, I'm, I could spend a whole bunch of time getting in the weeds on things and going through this, but I'll just echo the points here. We didn't get this until just now. It's not your fault, it's, I would assume that having a workshop, it's most productive if we have, we're all prepared to get into the weeds of things. So on that front, so do you find that the contractual services this past year was effective? Is that effective strategy?
Extremely effective, they were a big help.
So I'm struggling to, because we say we were understaffed, and that seemed to be an obstacle or a hurdle for us this past year. Yet if contractual services, which are, hey, we pay, we get a desired result back, why would that just not be the preferred route this past year to get through any staffing?
They weren't not here as a full-time staff member. They couldn't answer questions to the general public. It was just primarily project-oriented. It wasn't answering questions regarding the land development code or answering the process, processing for land development code changes or for comprehensive plan changes or annexations or variances or special exceptions. They did not handle any of that type of thing. And if they're only here for, you know, two or three days a week and not here for a full eight hours, you're only here, you're only getting that part-time help, so.
Got it. How are we going to get those positions staffed? If we weren't able to fill them and we had them budgeted this year?
How did we?
How are we going to?
They're already full. We've hired everybody.
So that's going to be completely filled
Yes.
by this budget.
Yes.
So, so on the contractual services front, then, what are they doing if we're fully staffed?
They, well, they're still, we've got two new planners that are not up to speed in regards to the processing for the comprehensive plan, land, all those same items. So they're getting up to speed, learning how to process paperwork and work with the developers, going online, doing the Zoom calls, going on, doing the in-person meetings, things like that. So the online, or the Kimberley Horn people, right now, they're working on some mapping systems for us, along with Mike Suver, so that we can actually get a mapping system that's interactive. And so they're working on that with Mike right now.
So that 585, that covers that new mapping?
Yes, yes.
Who's going to be doing the new mapping system?
Actually, our two new planners are also GIS. They know how to work the mapping system. So Mike Suver, who was down at public services now in IT, he's been, he's been working with Kimberley Horn to get the mapping system up to speed. And then when we got the two new planners coming on, or we have one right now, they're getting up to speed with the new system. There's a new GIS mapping system called ArcGIS Pro. And so it's a little bit different than the previous mapping system. And Mike Suver is very familiar with that. Our two new planners have not had the chance to work with that. They, because they, they were working with GIS at their respective schools about a year ago. So the new system is a little bit, it's a new, a little bit more convoluted, but it's also, once, they say it's more user-friendly. I've been on it once and it's, does seem a little bit, a little bit better.
What's the, what's the software called?
It's ArcGIS.
Arc?
Arc, A-R-C.
Thank you.
And it's Pro, it's the Pro version.
This is going to be a recurring theme as we talk through all departments, since you're first up. You know, when we talk about personnel, and it's one of the things I had sent over when I put over my budget priorities, is when we're thinking about staffing, how do you think about your staffing needs for planning and billing? Because each department within the city is going to have some sort of proxy or gearing ratio by which you say, are we understaffed, overstaffed? We've heard a lot over the last year about being understaffed. We saw it in the employee surveys as well. So when we think about planning, what's the volume or what's kind of the? I've got X amount of widgets, I need one person or one full-time equivalent to be able to satisfy that need and promote a level of service that our development community, our residents, would expect.
Right now, with the, we will have one senior planner, which is Gene. And then we've got a planner two, which is going to be Jun Sun. He's the one that's starting in July 31st. And then we've got a planner one, which is Amir Hamza. And then we also have the planning manager, which is Bobby Howell. So right now, based on the number of permits, not permits, but applications that we've been processing, one of the things that happened the previous year, and I think you remember, everything that was coming through had JS on it, which is Gene Sanchez. So what we want to do is be able to spread that out a little bit so that we have planners that are working on multiple projects, but you aren't hearing the staff reports from one person. You'll be hearing it from two or three different people. So that in itself will help spread, I guess you'd say, spread the wealth in regards to the projects. We had, I think it was around about 150 different applications that were processed over the previous last, previous year. And right now, we have, we have a whole lot of projects, but there, a lot of them are already approved. They're on our, we also have to update our project summary map in the table, which is, the last time that was done was in June, or January. So we've got to get that up to speed. That's one of those projects that Amir will probably be working on, along with Gene, when she gets back in. But I believe that with the number of projects we've got, that we are, we're at a stable point right now. If we end up getting, if we, I believe that with the number of projects that we've got, we're going to be okay. We do have a lot of different open, you know, properties that are still up in the KPI that can get developed. But it's, we're getting similar projects throughout the whole city, so they're manageable. Yes, I'd love to have an extra planner, but I think for what we have on staff right now with a full staff, I think we'll be okay for at least another year.
So with, I guess, your senior planner, which would be senior planner number one?
No, we have a, we have a senior, senior project coordinator slash planner, that would be Gene.
Okay.
That's okay.
Vacation, she goes out sick, whatever it may be, is there someone that can automatically do what she is doing?
We, yeah, every time somebody goes on vacation, we have our weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings, depending on what projects are coming in and what's needed for the department. But if somebody goes on vacation, we brief the whole staff. And then we take one person that can get, that can do her, do her job while she's away. So even if there's a, if there's a project that has to be presented to planning commissioner, city council, we have somebody that can do that to fill in.
Okay.
Most of the projects, because of the, they're, they're kind of a repeat of the same type of thing. A land use is a land use amendment. It just depends on what it's going from and what it's going to for the processing. And then obviously, it's the legal question in regards to, can it go to that particular land use or that particular zoning? But it's the same, same thing, we just have to change the spokes on the application.
So does this budget have for Kimberley Horn? I mean, you include...
That's under the contractual services still, if we needed them.
Okay. What do you have for this Kimberley Horn contractually? What did you set aside for it?
It's, there's, that's on a, that's on a need basis right now. Next year, I don't believe we're going to, you know, come October, we probably won't need them for what they were doing for us this time. Because again, we're going to have two new, two new members that by October 1st are going to be, I guess you could say, up to speed.
But I think the point that Commissioner Blasko was asking is, how much have you earmarked for their services?
We haven't, we haven't, that, we just, we simply put in an extra $100,000 for not just Kimberley Horn, but other, other studies that are going to be needed.
So the 585 that's in the 2024 proposed budget is aggregation of many different contractual services?
Yes, yes.
So can you unpack that a little bit more?
Well, we have anywhere from the, it's a, it's a long list. It's your property appraiser, you know, the appraisals for the property itself, surveys for the properties. And this is for any property that we've got. Like, for instance, excuse me, the property that we had on, I think I mentioned it one of the previous meetings or one of our staff meetings that we had, the property at the corner of Highland and 8th Street. It was a, that was the maintenance barn. So we had to get an appraisal on the whole property. And then we did a survey that surveyed the whole property, so we know what we had to work with. And then we had to split that property into four single-family home lots and a parkland. So that was all done, all contractually, through two different, two different companies, one for the appraisal, one for the survey itself. If we go out to bid on the project, that would be a separate process, but this can also pay for some of that legal advertising that's done for the bid process. If we do any traffic studies or transportation studies that cannot be paid for by traffic impact fees, that's also done through these funds. If there's another, if other departments have other specific studies that need to be done, we can also do that through this fund. If we need to hire specific, I keep hitting this, I'm sorry. If we need to hire specific companies to do any other studies for various properties, access, access studies, we, that's what this fund would be used for.
Yeah, I guess, and with pointing that out, obviously, that particular line item, 3,400 other contractual services, has grown over 400% since 2021. And so I would assume that a large allocation of that for 2023 is the current condition. But I just want to know where we've got levers to pull, if we're looking for 100K here or 100K there, because it seems like it's overstated.
Well, the, the other, the other thing that this is also beginning, is also part of being used, used for is your comprehensive plan changes, land development code changes, that, those are those things that kind of slide in when we, we don't know what's going to end up happening in the future. But we've already talked about doing a minor land development code change for our signage. That's something that staff does not have the expertise to do, but that's a legal, a lot of it's a legal expertise in regards to what we can actually regulate in accordance with Florida statutes. So that, that'll probably slide in there this year as a land development code update for the signage portion. Our two previous legal councils both, both recommended that we do that as a specific one just for signage itself. And that can, that can change quite a bit.
Any other questions?
I got one more, I guess.
I can't get into any of this.
I guess, walk me through
It's being sensitive.
the such variation of 21 to 24, or is that 1.2 million?
So I need to use this.
1.1, that 900, it's about 20 million. I guess, where does that variation come in, and what causes variations?
This is how busy we are. It just changes from year to year. There are years that we've, we've had to do a lot of paperwork for properties. Like back, back in, I think it was 2019, 20, or yeah, 2020 and 2021, we had different properties that we were disposing of, or we called surplus. And so we had to get surveys done and appraisals done. You know, the property up on Sandpiper, the property out on Lake, oh gosh, Lake To, the Lakeview, off of, off of Johns Road, I think it's called Lakeview. That was, that was done, I think it was four years ago. So there was, we've had different, we've had different demands. And what we, what I wanted to do is make sure we had enough money so that we had, we've got money in the coffers that we can pay for these without having to transfer money out of another portion of the budget.
Okay.
Which is also what we've done.
And are you able to, do you have this number in front of you? I guess, you're, we're not going to have the actual for '23 right now, but do you have like a year-to-date or like a T-10 for what, or T-9 for what, what you've spent so far compared to where we're at now?
I've got the...
I guess, how much is left on the table every year on average?
I, I do not have that right on the, right here.
If you did, great, no, I'll back into it at some point here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I can go to building.
Yeah, I guess, I was just still trying to wrap it around the personnel costs. Because when I went back and looked at '21, '24 personnel costs is less than what it was in '21. And, and looking at salary increases and everything, I'm just trying to figure how we are less than three years ago today.
It's just, it's right pocket, left pocket, because I think all the, all the money that we saved in terms of those positions not being filled.
Last year, yeah.
You were bloated in your contractual services line.
But I thought that was in '23. Well, if you go all the way back to '21.
Oh, I thought you were talking about just the dipping of going from '22 to '23.
Right. Yeah, the, yeah, the '23, of course, we didn't have the personnel, so the, all the expenses, it's not just
Right.
you know, the salary, but it's your benefits and everything else, you know, mixed into that, yep. And then in 2021, we had, we had a full staff. I had two, two planner ones, though. We boosted those up to a planner two, so that would have inflated that. One of those persons, one of those people left in 2022, and so there might have been a little bit of a dip in that. They went private industry again.
But I thought we was going back to a full staff.
We are going back to full staff. But right now, I've got a full, full plate. I've got planner one, a planner two, a senior planner, a planning manager, and me. So it's, it's not just loaded on one side or the other. I couldn't tell you exactly that, but it's, you're looking at a, you know, $20,000, $30,000 difference just for wages themselves. just for wages themselves.
Commissioner Nesta, to your point, as of the nine-month actual, if you annualize their current spend, it'd be about 400K light to plan.
Okay.
So 2.8 is their amended budget, it would be around 2.4 and some change.
Where are you seeing that? Is that just numbers you have in your head?
That, so that was in the consent agenda, last city council meeting. It's the second attachment for the, the June, the June financial progression.
Got you.
So what was the number on that?
So out of a 2.8 million dollar budget, annual projection, I'm assuming this is on annualized basis, is 2.48 million, so call it two and a half.
Okay, we good? Want to move on to building?
Sure. On to building? Building, same type of thing as, as what was handed out. One of the things that I did include for this, I did get the last update for, for June for permits in COs and inspections. And right now, based on this year versus last year, so far, we are up about 100 permits per month on average. And we're up about three, we got about 34 COs on single-family per month. Last year, or in 2022, it was 31.83. Overall, COs were up, we're, we're at 53.3 COs per month. Average last year, it was 41.67. So we are extremely busy. Our inspections are down a little bit, but that usually will come onboard in the latter part of the, of the fiscal, of the, of the calendar year too, which we had seen last year. We do have a full staff. We've got five inspectors now. We do not have a, we have an acting building official right now. That's John Hanson. He's been here for quite a number of years, so he knows the city pretty good. But we, so that's actually, what that ends up doing is he still goes out and does some inspections, but he's also in-house doing the, the reviews on the building permits themselves. So we are, and then we just had another, one of our permit techs just went to a, actually, we don't know where she went. So we're actually down a permit tech and down a, I guess you could say, a deputy building official. So that's, that's, those are two people that are pretty valuable based on the number of inspections, the number of permits and COs that we are processing. And we are working to hire a, a, a new permit clerk or permit tech, depending on the experience that they've got. More than likely, it'll probably be a permit tech.
So what, let me ask you.
Yeah.
The former director that you had for that department, that's vacated, that's still.
Yeah, John, John Hanson was working as the deputy building official, and we have him as the acting building official at this time.
He's the deputy?
He's, well, he's the acting, he was the deputy building official, now he's the acting building official. He has all his credentials for it.
Is that the one that, you know, Scott had, that was his, his title? The former Scott, was that his name?
Scott Adams was the building official.
He was the building official?
Yep.
And so that one is the one that is now being filled by John?
Yes. He hasn't been officially appointed.
He hasn't been officially appointed yet?
No, acting.
Why?
He's the acting building official.
Oh. So are you waiting for the new budget year to do that?
I believe so, at least at this stage.
Okay. Just asking, because, so you have, how many permit texts do you have?
We have three at this stage.
And a full staff is considered?
Four.
And you have five inspectors?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So if, so John is actually doing two? He's, he's wearing two hats right now, as I'm saying?
He's, he's, he's the acting building, building official. His duties are basically the same as what he was doing, except he has that added responsibility of making the final decision for building permits and the fee structures for impact fees, doing the table and all that for that too.
Okay.
Again, this, the data on the back would suggest that you obviously know your volumes that are coming through, through the, through the door. So again, staffing, as you say, four needed on the permit side or whatever. Do you have internal SLAs? Like, for example, a resident comes and submits a permit to have a fence installed. Do you have kind of in, in your own internal head, hey, that should take less than seven days? Or that should take less than 14 days? Are you staffed accordingly to make sure that any SLAs, both from a resident perspective and our business community is, you know, they would think that that's normal?
Acceptable.
Or benchmarked across the.
There, there are, there are weeks that, that we do get multiple building permits coming in from the builders. You know, at one point, we had the 10-in, 10-out policy. Personally, I think that should have gone to 20-in, 20-out, because we are getting, we are getting permits coming in. One, one developer brought in 40 building permits. They aren't building 40 houses at the same time, but we still have to process those within 30 days. So there are, there are times that we have our building techs coming in on weekends in order to process those, to get them out in a timely fashion. One of the things that we are doing, though, we're about 30, I think it's about 30, 30 days, I want to say, away from doing the online permitting. We're still doing some testing. That will help, because the, when the building permits come in, they will get routed out to each of the different departments that are doing the review, all at the same time versus having paper that has to be reviewed by one person. And then that stack goes over to the next person, and then the stack goes over to the next person. So that means basically each one of those people has at least a week to be able to process. When we get, when we go online, those, that'll all be electronic. So we'll be able to pass those, all the building permits, out to everybody that has to do a review all at the same time. So that should cut down on, on the time, time processing for, for all the permits.
How, what's the timeline of that project? When is that scheduled to be implemented?
I believe it's 30 days right now. We're July, I want to say August. I think we're shooting for September, might be, might be 60 days out.
Okay, and then natural ramp of everybody getting familiar with the new process.
Yeah. And we're doing the same thing with the, with the business tax receipts and planning and zoning for, for comprehensive plan changes and land use changes.
You, you mentioned an SLA of 30 days. The 30 days, what? That's turnaround time for what?
That's to process the building permit and have them come in and pay for, pay for the permit.
Is that just an internal policy kind of?
No, that's the, that's by Florida, Florida statutes requires a turnaround.
What happens if we violate that? We deliver in 30 days?
There's, there's a grace period that's, that's in there. It just depends on how busy we are.
How often does that happen?
Not that often. That's, that's why we're, we do the overtime on weekends every once in a while, just to, just to catch up.
Voluntary, though, voluntary.
It is voluntary, yeah. We, we do, we do not require them to come in. Fortunately, they'll, they'll come in and, you know, it usually takes some, they'll usually come in. What, most we do is, you know, two people at a time, and they'll, they'll come in for, you know, four or five hours or so.
What's, but they're, they're still getting overtime, right? It's just on a voluntary?
Yes, yeah, unless they elect to flip it for days during the week. And, but we can only do that if we're fully staffed during the week in the first place. Because if somebody takes off and we have other people that are on vacation, or somebody is, you know, that's sick, those, those also take priority.
This is where I'll come in, right? Have you done the analysis of what's the break-even point there? I mean, if we're paying overtime at a higher cost, what, why wouldn't we just hire an additional FTE to accommodate volumes and just, quite frankly, have a better experience with the public?
That, we were, we were, we were looking at that. That's one of the reasons why we got a fourth, fourth permit, permit person. People who's last year that we hired, we, we had it, we brought it up to four from three. One of the things that we are waiting to see is how the online permitting makes the whole process run smoother. We believe it's going to run smoother, because again, we won't have that paperwork that has to get shifted from division to division, to department to department. It's all done at the same time, it's all online. You can, you can track it, even the people that are on the, the public that are dropping off the permits online. They can pay for it online, they can also see the process, who's, who's done the review, if there's any comments or any corrections that need to be done, that can also be done online. So it's all that much faster. So what we want to do is see where we are in that process. If we need somebody to, to answer phones or, or to look up permits, that might be something that the year after this, if we need somebody to hire, to hire somebody as a secretary just to keep every, all the questions from the general public. That's usually the time, the, the thing that's taking the most amount of time right now is answering questions on the phone.
So you won't allocate within your budget for that person? I mean, we'll have to wait an entire year to consider it?
Right now, the, the expectation with the online permitting is that we won't need that extra person, because the online permitting is going to, basically, it'll streamline the whole process. Instead of taking a full 30 days, which usually they're getting them done in about two to three weeks right now, on average.
But I still think, I mean, even if you were to implement that solution today, I mean, you're, you're going to have some clunkiness, both from people engaging with it from an external perspective, internally creating policies and procedures around, hey, once you get this part in your inbox, you've got X amount of days internally to process this stuff. I mean, have all that been worked out?
That's what we're working on right now, is the timeline for, for each of those. And, and for each of the different, each of the different permits, how long it's going to take and who those permits actually go to for the review. We've, we've got to take all that into account, because if somebody goes on vacation, obviously, they can't send it to Jean. If she's on vacation, they'd have to send it to either Amir or, or June.
It's my understanding you guys have already kind of did a soft launch on this program, correct?
Yes.
With the, like, one developer, I think, right?
Yes. Yeah, we, we've sent it out to see if they were able to respond on a timely, on a timely fashion. I even got it myself, and I said, you know, this is, you know, test one done. And you just make sure that the, the online is actually working and it's getting sent to us on, at the right time and in the format.
And have you felt that with that soft launch that has been, been building the efficiencies you feel that it is going to next year?
Yes, yeah, John's been, John can't wait right now, because John Hanson, that is. He's, he's been doing a lot of the testing himself, along with Jennifer Esquera. So he's, he's, he's our main permit tech.
Okay.
And what happens should the software fail?
We're back to doing it the way we are right, we are right now, which is still, it's proficient, but it, there are times that it does get bogged down, and that, that's only really happened since we opened it up the, from the 10 to 10, you know, 10, 10-in, 10-out.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, Jim, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I guess if we have any more questions, we can.
Give me a call.
Because I will say this about your department, and that is, you know, I spend time up on the second floor, and there is a lot of customer, person-to-person customer service. And I see that a lot of times, they spend a lot of time with the clients, with the developers. And so, you know, maybe you should have someone that is basically there to spend that much time, and that allows your permit text to continue to work. Because a lot of times, I, you know, they spend a lot of time with the, the clients that come in. And we do have a lot of clients that come in face-to-face here.
You are definitely correct.
So I just, you know, as we move forward, because the city's growing, I mean, you're showing that with your, with your numbers here. I mean, it literally not only just doubled, it's more than that. And so that means, you know, more service that you have to provide. And we're, we're growing, but we're working with the same amount of staff as if we were still doing these numbers, the numbers from 22.
Well, we did, like I mentioned, we did add a, another building clerk position. I think it was about a year and a half, two years ago. And then planning, we also added another, an extra planner. So we, we have that extra, you know, in fact, as when, when I was the director, when I first came on, you know, back on board six years ago, I was in the planning side. And when we restructured everything, basically, we, I had to move out of there in order to get room for the other planner. So, but it's, it's working. That's the good part, and, you know, I'm just glad that we've got staff, we're getting fully staffed again.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so now we're going to here.
There we go.
Where are we going to now?
Good evening. I just want to give you a brief overview of economic development department. There's no link, because we don't have actually anyone for that one. But it's basically the same thing that was in the budget amendment, the $200,000, and 120 for salaries and wages and benefits, and about 9,000. City retirement, about 12,000. We put 30,000 in contractual services, travel and per diem 10,000, and operating supplies 18,000.
Oh, that, that was for the economic development director that?
That, that department, yes.
Right, that, we had 12 candidates on that one was, are we putting this back out again?
It's posted.
Yes, ma'am, it's going back out.
It is.
Yeah, and to that end, it was posted as of Friday. I would encourage, so I, I've sent out that posting to economic development directors and municipalities around here. There's also the Florida Economic Development Council. I've heard back from several members on that committee, and they said that they found a tremendous amount of success posting on their internal job board that they have there. I think the expense was like 200 bucks to post on there. For me, that's not a large expense to have.
Xander, you got that?
Xander. About 200,000, I mean, 200 dollars.
200.
Is to what now? What's the?
Oh, the, the name of the council is the Florida Economic Development Council. It's a state organization. They've got committee members from different regional areas.
I'm not, I'm not sure.
I know, just write it down, just, if you'll take a look at that.
Yeah, and I could send you the, the information too.
And that was what you said, about 200 dollars to post on that?
Great.
We've gotten two pretty good ones here in the last couple of days, I do know that. We've probably gotten 10, but only two, two, two that I would be worthy of at least an interview.
I just wanted to give you an update, it's still status quo. But, yeah, in addition, I want to apologize for the information not being as timely as has been in the past. This is the second year with this open-gub software. And because of the number of upgrades or modifications they did in their system over the year, it kind of wiped out all of our numbers. So that's.
Now, I, I want to give Blanch and her team credit. It, it has been a struggle from, I mean, you know, you think about, she's brand new, her two top lieutenants are brand new, Edward's not here to help with coaching. So it's been a, it's been a struggle. I mean, and it's, but, but not because of not the hard work of your team. So I.
Thank you.
Truly appreciate what y'all have done to get us to this point. I, I know it's not what we'd like to, we'd like to have had it weeks ago and a little more preparedness, but they were right up to the last minute, you know, trying to get, get, get us where we can at least have a.
So I appreciate your patience and understanding. Just let us know if you have any questions.
Okay. Radley?
Oh, this is recreation.
Good evening, Radley Williams, Parks and Recreation Director. Good evening, Mayor and Councilor, Commissioners. This afternoon, or this evening, I'm going to be presenting the Parks and Recreation budgets. Going to the link here. Start here with the visualization. You will notice that we did have a increase in personnel costs. This was due to the addition of the Facilities Maintenance Division into the Parks and Recreation budget. So that's been added into our overall Parks and Recreation budget. Some of the highlights. This proposal has a 7% overall increase from the FY '23 budget, when all the divisions are considered. Personnel costs, 12%. Operating expenses, we actually have a decrease of 10%. Capital outlay, an increase of 52%. And again, that total increase is 7%. Just some of the overall highlights that we'll get into as we move through the budgets for the Parks and Rec Department. As I mentioned, the personnel costs, you see an increase there because the Facilities Maintenance Division was, was added to the department. We did sharpen the fence a little bit. We did, uh, sharpen the fence a little bit. This is my first, after my first full year in the operation, I was able to go with the management team and really look at how we budget, uh, and what our needs are compared to what we're spending. Um, so I was able to sharpen the pencil a little bit and get some decreases due to some efficiencies and, and some, um, budget changes. Our capital budgets include a variety of projects, uh, from parks beautifications, amphitheater upgrades, uh, some additional vehicles, some additional equipment, um, some additional lights and light conversions at our sports fields, um, some esports equipment for our Billy Dean Center, uh, some additional Camp Weewaw upgrades, uh, to the amenities. And then facilities maintenance has a long list of renovations and upgrades for, uh, mainly the fire department, uh, based off of some of the needs, uh, at those fire stations. We can get into, get into these budgets. I'm gonna start with parks.
Okay, here we go. Parks. Personnel.
So into the detail of the parks budget, if we look at our, uh, overall highlights, uh, personnel costs raised by 14%. Our operating expenses are down 9%. Uh, you will see a huge increase there in the capital outlay, but that's due to, uh, some projects that I'll get into here that we're hoping to complete. We have no new personnel requested for this budget and kinda to piggyback off of some of the discussion, uh, in community development, uh, the National Recreation Park Association has a standard, uh, for a city our size to have 50.73 full-time employees. We currently have 43 full-time employees. Um, kind of a caveat to that number though, uh, the national average is 58% to be maintenance or operational. Our budget is, or our personnel org chart is heavy maintenance and operational. So 58% is the standard, uh, we're at 81%. So we're operating with a, with a good load of, of our frontline staff and our maintenance operating personnel. Um, so at this time, we're sitting in a pretty good spot personnel-wise.
So are you comparing the size of the park as opposed to the size of the park of other cities?
Uh, these, this data is based off of population size.
Oh, it's population.
Yes, so the national standard is 8.9 employees per 10,000 residents. And of that, 46% are recommended to be maintenance personnel or frontline staff, operations staff. So again, we're in a good spot. We're pretty lean at the top, uh, which is a testament to our management team. Um, so we're in a pretty good position now. The city is continuing to grow. So one of the areas that we are, uh, looking at for potential growth in the full-time staff area is our facilities maintenance division. But that's gonna continue to, to be a need as we continue to get these new buildings online, public safety building and some other buildings that are coming, so. But from a current standpoint, we're, we're looking pretty good on personnel.
Okay.
All right.
The, the other contractual services, what does that put on there?
So, let me just scroll to here. So we're looking at this number right here, 824-680.
Yes.
So let me pull up the detail for that.
I keep doing this. Okay.
So that's gonna be, in general, that's gonna be for some of our items like, uh, our athletic field chemical treatments, which is the largest player of that. That's a 204,000 and some change. Um, we did have to increase there due to some rising costs in the product. Um, but that's a, a huge, uh, part of how we keep the Northwest complex operating. Uh, we also have things like outdoor pest control, our city property mowing and park mowing, that's a $450,000 contract. Palm, palm tree care maintenance, additional chemical properties or chemical treatments for some of our properties. Uh, grease trap, septic pumping, debris removal. Uh, and then we also put in s- uh, some new spend we're asking for, which is on the list here, uh, park beautification projects, we're asking for a $50,000 kinda set aside to, as we move through the year, identify areas that could use some landscaping beautification, um, and utilize that through our contractor.
Okay. And then?
Okay.
Sorry, no, go ahead.
No. Where it says amphitheater capital upgrades, what, what are you planning there?
So I can, I can show you that. So that's next on the list. Um, we are looking at doing some amphitheater upgrade, uh, capital upgrades and, and mainly right now, we're looking at fencing, additional fencing. Uh, a lot of this is, has come from just our experience with the larger promoter events, ticketed events and even some of the smaller ticketed events. Right now, if a group comes in and wants to run any type of gate access controlled event, they're having to bring a tremendous amount of rental fencing. Um, to the point of, it's a lot of extra setup time and it's also a larger expense for these groups that are coming in. So some of these areas we're looking at to identi- uh, to add fencing, no gate, obviously it'll be open when the park's not being used for, for a promoted event, but to just set a better venue, uh, layout for the property. So.
Are you gonna pass that on? Are we gonna increase rates?
We are, we are looking to increase the rental rates, uh, for the amphitheater from currently their $2,500 for, for a day, a maximum. We're looking to double that to 5,000.
And that will cover the expense for?
That'll help pay some of this down and then also we are exploring additional services, uh, contracted services, um, such as g- uh, cleaning, event cleaning, uh, parking, some items that, as we're getting these larger events, are becoming more and more challenged for leaving it in the hands of the promoter or for our staff afterwards to clean up in overtime. So, but those costs would also, when they're developed, if we go that route, would be passed on to the promoter.
And by doubling the cost to run it, are we still gonna be comparable with other venues of our size?
Yes, so we're actually, we're undervalued right now. We're, we're very affordable for the venue style and size and the capacity that we can hold, we're undervalued for that.
Do we have anybody that's exclusively running events at the amphitheater?
So our events team is Carolyn Ray, she's our events manager. We, this year, we brought on, in our reorganization, we reclassified a position into an events coordinator position, uh, uh, so she's been with us since the summer. And then that division is also responsible for Camp Weewaw. So we have two positions that are primarily over at Camp Weewaw, um, running those programs and events. So we do have a dedicated staff that is an area as this continues to grow. As of future, we might need some additional staffing, um, to.
Yeah.
Further dedicate to a venue like this.
Yeah, I think that's, that's like highly needed at this point, especially we're gonna spend $180,000 on fencing, that that's the biggest issue we're dealing with from promoters and, and people running these events. That's a lot of money for the city to take on to help them succeed on their events, but the more they succeed, the more we succeed, but we need to be doing it in a way that's not just, I understand we're doubling our cost to 5,000 or their cost, but that's a small price to pay for $180,000 fencing. Um, the time setup and all that, that we're saving them as well. So, um, I, I think having a position that exclusively runs events here not only will help promote the city in a bigger and better way, but also ensure that it's being done properly. These events are gonna be more refined and, and have a lot more, um, success in the near future as well. So I think that would be beneficial 'cause, and again, that leads into Camp Weewaw as well. I think there needs to be a high focusing, you know, I've discussed this a lot and also I've discussed it or asked the council to come up with, what's the plan with that too? What, what are we doing, which I know we're not focused on that right now, but.
Yeah, and we'll dig into some of that.
Yeah, I want, that's definitely a topic conversation I want to have a little bit deeper of as well. But I do think at the amphitheater, we need to have somebody that's highly focused on creating a, an incredible venue, taking what's already here and then amplifying it that much more.
Right, and that's one of the reasons when we did the reorganization this, this current fiscal year, we only had an event supervisor, which was Carolyn. We kinda reshuffled to get that extra event coordinator support, which, uh, her name's Lexi. She's been really focused on the amphitheater events. But a venue this style and this size, if that's the direction we wanna go, it is gonna, to maximize the investment, it would benefit to eventually get to that point where we're, we have a staff that is amphitheater, uh, focused.
Well, I think that's the, that, that's exactly it. If we're gonna be spending $180,000 to ensure that events are good here and we're helping promoters and, and becoming more of an attractive venue, then we need to have somebody specialized in it. If we're gonna keep it smaller and more neighborhood-centric, that's great, then I, we need to balance that out in some way. We need to have a vision.
Right, and I would say the, uh, the data is still coming in. So the growths and the event requests are continuing to grow through this year from last year.
Sure.
And from the year before. So we are seeing interests grow in that, which I think will then justify us to be able to continue to, to dedicate to a venue. It's a beautiful facility. So I think, and some of the late, the vent, the events we've had recently have really shown that large crowds can come to the theater and, and enjoy their time.
And you, thank you for saying 180, cause I looked at 60 and I forgot to hit times three.
But yeah, we phased this into be less of a hit on the budget.
But to that end, I mean, if, if we're still seeing interest and that's not waning because they have to rent fences to come in, I mean, is it, is it cumbersome to us? Why, why do we care?
Anytime you bring rental prop, rental companies onto property, you run the risk of getting additional damage and things that need to be taken care of. So some of the larger events, we've had some rental equipment get stuck in the property that we've then had to, they've had to get it pulled out and we've had to make repairs and, and things like that. So it does, the less we can have on property rental-wise, the better. Uh, same thing, I, I identified it on here, I didn't put it, I didn't put a label, but we do have rollover funds, uh, for an additional bathroom facility at this, uh, Green Square right here. So same principle, the less porta-potties we have to bring in for an event, the less that the rental companies have to go out throughout the property, the less is the chance of something to happen. Also, it improves the, the setup time and the breakdown time. So it creates efficiency in us flipping that, the venue.
So are the lines that we see on the drawing here, the, is it the only fencing that you're contemplating at this time?
Uh, at this time, i- if you look at this area over here, we have a large, the large grass hill, um, you know, as this, if this continues to grow as a venue, there's further discussions on the ideas we can talk about, um, potentially turning this into some, uh, amphitheater parking, uh, potentially there's another building that we put over here with more restrooms and an office space, but there's, there's also office space or concession space that we could convert into office space in the existing ticket booth. So there's, as we continue to, to move down that path, there's options we can do to continue to upgrade the facility. But the, the actual securing of the venue is a big, is a big step forward and, um.
I, I just felt like we needed some additional fencing at the top of the hill.
So we do, so this black line here, uh, we are, we were able to, um, we're gonna be putting some fencing along that black line as well to, to fence in that field.
Okay.
Cause that is a big area. I mean, we had the fence down here at the bottom of the parking lot, but there's a big space there that really is a, is an athletic field. It's not a, it's not for the event. So close that in, that also protects our field because we've had trucks try and run on, run on the turf up there. Um, but we are moving, um, this budget year to go ahead and get that closed in.
Okay.
Also, when you have an event going on, you can't do anything on that field right now because a ball is gonna go flying down the hill. So no matter what size, if it's, even if it's a smaller event, we can't put anybody out there, so.
And, uh, go ahead.
Uh, so recently that, not this last, uh, uh, event, paid event, but there was one paid event where up and down Jason Dwellie Park, where they were parked all over, on the grass, over the sidewalks.
Right.
I mean.
So that's.
Are we doing anything?
So that's one of the contracted services that we're looking at and actually, uh, it should be at this next council meeting, where we've got to piggyback that we're presenting, uh, to obtain some parking services. And that's to help better control those larger events, which we're having trouble with the promoters. Different promoters have different crews that are coming in, they're not familiar with the property, so that's a cost.
Can't we just require them to use our, whoever we use?
That's what, so we would contract with the, with the parking services, it's actually a City of Orlando contract.
So they'll, uh, we'll pay for it, they'll reimburse us?
They'll reimburse, yeah, it'll be part of the fee.
Okay.
So, but those are some of the items that, as this, the logistical items of a large event, parking, we had plenty of parking in the park, people didn't know that, so they started parking on the street. So instead of having a, a professional, uh, service that can come in, park it the way we want it, and again, that cost will be, uh, a cost of doing business at, at the property.
The, this is switching gears just slightly, but still amphitheater. The concession stand, which really are just being used as kinda new bathrooms to the left west, sorry, closest to.
Oh, right here.
Yes. Are we doing anything with those concession stands? We making money on that or is it just kinda wasted space at this point?
Uh, we do have, I mean, we do offer it up for the concessionaires for the promoter events.
Okay.
Right now, most of the events just use as production space. So like, they'll have their, they'll have their day of production in that area. Um, we are gonna be pushing harder during our Saturday sounds events. We've got some new signage up on the building to kinda identify, hey, there's concession stand here, to start utilizing that area.
Was that open during Saturday sounds?
Uh, we, the vendor we had, we tried them a couple times and they went back out to the tent. So we're, we're working with the vendor on that.
Okay. Yeah, cause I think that would, the fact that we built in, spent money on it, it's right there, we need to be utilizing it.
Yeah. Um, some of the promoters utilize that concession area for their VIP area if they're utilizing, if they're creating a VIP area on that side of the property or on that side of the venue. But it is an area that, one challenge of that, of that location is it's not, um, you can't put a hood inside of it or there's no hood inside of it. So it's, it's more of your prepackaged food.
Did we put in a process, I remember a few council meetings ago that we had someone with, remember naming the amphitheater and of course, we were going back to the drawing board to create a process in which we can put that out and encourage someone to come in, cause the amphitheater itself needs some upgrade.
Right, so we.
Some improvement, I should say.
Right, so we are looking at the policy, uh, to make a policy update for those type of unsolicited bids and then we can also look at putting it out as a proposal, uh, just beyond the matter of timeline for finance.
Okay. Anytime soon, is that gonna come within this new budget year?
Uh, I'm not sure, I'd have to get with finance to see when we could get availability to put it in.
We're gonna be updating, um, the procurement policy later on during the year, hopefully August or September is, is the timeline for that and we'll incorporate, um, that policy update in there for unsolicited proposals that allow us to take in proposals when someone sends it into us, but we also compete that proposal as well.
Okay.
Okay.
And you said the Green Square is already in this budget for?
It's a, yeah, there's funding already committed for that. Uh, it's a rollover fund from last year. So we're, we've got money to go ahead and do that.
Okay, and do we have funding for the other restroom that you said?
This one over here?
Yes.
Not currently, no.
Did we have any open grants for this area or parking, anything? Cause I know we've gotten some grants.
Uh, the only grant we had on this property was the, uh, new playground that was installed to the north.
Right.
Um, that was a, that was a FERDAP, FERDAP grant, Florida Recreation Development grant.
Right, so where are we with that grant?
That grant's closed out, so that's completed. Um, if you remember, we did apply for additional funding for the inclusive playground through FERDAP, that got denied. So there is an opportunity, but.
Why did that get denied?
Uh, because we already had a project on that, in that property.
Okay.
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't give us a second project on that property. And that's pretty standard for those FERDAP grants, they're gonna look to spread the, spread the money.
So we don't have any grant money right now? Is that, I thought we did, remember I had asked you, was there any open grant?
We have grant, we have grants at Camp Weewaw for, for, uh, the land and water grant and we have a grant at Alonzo Williams Park.
What happened to the grant that we had applied for, for the, um, special needs park?
The inclusive playground?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that was a FERDAP grant and that got denied. That was the one that, because we already had a, a grant open on that property, they, they weren't gonna reissue another one.
What was the project before that?
You mean it was a Northwest rec?
Right.
He's, he's saying the whole park, so that, the, the.
Advent Health?
Was it that one? No, is the?
No.
Park to the west of that?
So park up, up by the bathrooms at the north side of the park.
Northwest side of that, of the lake.
Right.
There's a newer park under the trees.
Yeah, that was a-
That was a grant.
Grant park.
So they're saying because we did that on a grant, we couldn't get any funds for the, on the same park, the 200 acre park, we can't get this similar funds for something totally opposite on the opposite side of the park.
Oh, okay.
So.
And if we're done talking about the amphitheater?
I could go back. Yep.
I would love to talk about the soccer fields and then jump into pickleball and tennis as well, if there's any plans for any of those.
I do have that, I have some information in the capital, I'm sorry, the rec impact fee budget, which I was going to present later.
That's fine. Perfect. As long as we're discussing it at some point, I'm happy.
It's on the list, so. If we're looking at the rest of these highlights for the parks budget, we have the Northwest Road. That is, also, we do have some funds that are carrier for this, but we are budgeting additional funds to, to boost this project. This is a, an exit road on the south of the property.
Can you make that bigger?
I can, oh yeah, sorry.
Thank you.
A little bit better. Uh, this is an exit road that was planned for the south side of the property, running along the school property line. We've kind of gone through a couple of different design phases and we're looking at this current proposal. So we've added some, or we're requesting some additional funds to boost this project a little further. Right now, there's just under $500,000 dedicated. We're asking for an additional 200,000. And the plan with this is to add the exit road, but also add two additional grass surface parking lots, with the thought being that as this inclusive playground is constructed and finished, along with a sensory garden aspect, this is going to be a very popular space to utilize. So we wanted to give some opportunity for some additional parking closer by. If you look here, there would also be some concrete ADA accessible spaces, while still giving us the, the outflow we're looking for on some of the larger events. Some other initial ideas for parking was to run some angled parking along the sideways here. We just think it wasn't going to satisfy the, the need at that location. So this is kind of the development plan that we're looking at for that Northwest Road. And the additional funds are asked to help us boost that project.
Can you give us an update on that inclusive park?
Yes. So we do, I am working with a potential nonprofit partner that might want to join into the project. So I'll be working with our city administrator and city attorney to discuss how that might look and then bring that forward to get that project moving forward. We do still have a commitment, a donation commitment, $100,000 from a private individual, in addition to our $450,000 that we have committed. So.
So what, I guess, what's the delay on this then?
What's that?
What's the delay?
Um, well, we do now have a piggyback contract for the playground itself. We've met with that representative with the playground company, got some initial plans and ideas from them. Now we'd like to get the, the nonprofit accessibility group involved to help us make sure we're getting the right park.
Are you able to tell us who that is?
It's a nonprofit?
It's a nonprofit, profit.
That's going to?
Yeah, let me get the name.
And you said a hun, uh, 100,000?
We do have a hundred thousand dollar commitment from a private individual to donate.
100,000 dollar commitment.
Uh, they were the advisory board for the disabled, but they've now rebranded into. I believe they just rebranded to, I'm going to have to, I don't want to misquote the name.
Okay.
I might have to get that back to you.
They're locally based?
They're, yeah, they're locally based in the Altamont area.
All right. Then you said you already reached out to basically a contractor effectively that can do this?
A playground, a playground manufacturer, yes.
Did they, what was the kind of out the door price? What did that look like overall?
Um, well, we're looking at what's within our budget. So we can, we can get a large structure with some amenities that are around it, including the port and place surfacing to make it accessible. Some pretty cool swings that are, again, inclusive. The idea is inclusive.
Yeah.
So not just an area for a physically challenged parent or child, but something that they can play together.
Well, I think having the sensory component as well is really cool too.
Right.
I want to make sure, although, yeah, I understand we did budget it. If we need to do some more, let's spend some more to really be able to use it correctly. So.
Right.
I don't want to just use that as our top out number and we just got to fit it in there. If we got some space, we got a lot of space there. So let's do some really cool things.
I'd be 100%. I would, I plan to bring these plans back to you for, obviously for some review as we're getting closer. And then if there is some additional need, I can certainly bring that forward.
To that end, I mean, if we're going to do a ride, let's do a ride. Why, why are we going to do grass parking spaces? Cause grass is just going to turn into dirt. I mean, let's, let's be real.
Yeah. I mean, we can, we can go with asphalt space. It's just going to increase the cost. Now, we're currently in the design phase of this. We have a contractor that's doing this for us. They can provide us the two alternates as far as costs.
Yeah, cause.
And then ultimately it comes back to when you bid it, the cost could be way different than the estimate.
And then are we doing more, because I see you got, call it 10 accessible spaces there. With the nature of that playground and what it's going to become, do you think that's sufficient or we should have more?
I think that's sufficient. We can also, if there is a greater need that comes down, if we do go for more, if it's grass, we can put more spaces in easy. If it's already a striped asphalt, we can still adjust if we need to adjust more, but.
And then are you doing, you have Edwards Field on there. Are you doing something around the parking on Edwards Field too? Because like I said, where the, where that one accessible parking spot is now or two, whatever it is, I mean, all the, all the area around it is just complete dirt.
Yeah. And we've tried to kind of treat that area and we closed a section of that last year to try and grow some, some sod back in. It's just a high traffic area. So there's some options that we're looking at on, on how to mitigate that.
So I would think at least like one strip of parking that goes the length of it should satisfy a whole bunch of people that go out there on, on the weekends and do ahok soccer games and things like that.
Yeah. And one of the challenges with that property though, is a lot of people, if you'll drive by during the day, they'll park under the trees for shade. So they're kind of dry.
You have to give options, right?
Right.
I mean, you can't take away their ability to park under the shade, but you have to park here now.
Right.
And then the field is for, you know, sports use.
Yeah. So that, and that, that's, I did listen into the CRA budget hearing last week, since I missed it. But I did hear those comments and, and we can look at that further. And it is in the CRA, so that's an area that could definitely be enhanced some. Now it is a area, just to bring up, obviously we have the Rotary Fair there twice a year, the Art Village Festival. So there are some heavy events that utilize that area for parking and, and event space. So we just want to figure out how to-
What I'm thinking in my mind's eye would not-
Right.
It wouldn't compete with that. I think you could do both and-
Yeah.
Everybody would be happy. Okay. What, what, what is the plan for Edwards Field? Cause you mentioned it in here.
Uh, it was in that $50,000 if we wanted to do some landscape upgrades. So that was to kind of look at if we need to do some additional sod repair, maybe not in the high traffic area, but out in the field area to kind of improve that area or level some of that field a little bit better. We have some funds to kind of try and attack some of that.
Do we have any, speaking of just parking in our parks, do we have any funds or plans for Alonzo Williams, Billy Dean Center or anything?
So that parking lot project is actually getting ready to kick off here, I think, next week.
Okay. And can you give us a little more detail on that?
So I believe it was 17 spaces that are being added. And it's, it's part of the Alonzo Williams Park Grant, Land and Water Grant.
Where are those spaces going to be located at?
So if you're in the Alonzo Williams Park property, if you go outside the Billy Dean Center back doors and you have the playground to the right, the parking lot will be in the lot further to the right, which is currently kind of overgrown, unkept, um, kept in area. So.
That's what we already approved, right?
Right. That's been, yeah, that's been in the process.
Make sure nothing changed.
Yeah. Are you referring to the south side parking?
I was just asking if there's any parking. Oh, but yeah, I didn't know if we were going to convert those spots that are too small for vehicles, can convert those into parallel parking spots. And then obviously the, the land that we own just to the south of it as well. So I don't know if there was any plans for that or that's just?
Not right now. The plans are to try and finish that parking lot. That's currently in the, but, in the grant phase and get that online. It's going to also increase some sidewalk connectivity to the Billy Dean Center and then kind of go from there.
I saw, go back to that.
This?
Yeah. Um, a little, little spot there. Are we going to accommodate the Wolf Lake with a sidewalk? Because the students are all using that back entrance that we-
So we, we have had some discussions with the school, the principal, which has now changed since we had that conversation. But there is some, it does sound like there's some interest of them potentially putting a gate into the property, into our property, so that parents can then drive to this area, park and wait for their kids.
That's what they're doing already.
Right. Uh, so get them off of Jason Dwelly and get them into the-
Right.
Into the park and the playground area. So we, we are working with the, with the school to try and get that accomplished.
Are we going to try and do that this school year?
We're trying to get this design finalized. This fiscal year will add more money to the, to the budget for the project so that we can then go ahead and go out to bid to get the project constructed.
Um, I'm sorry, repeat that again?
So we are, we're requesting additional funding in this current, in the FY24 budget to boost this project so that when the design is complete, we can take the design and put it out to bid, which would happen no earlier than October 1st, because that, when the budget starts.
Okay. So it will include that little sidewalk there. Does?
If the school would like to open the gate or would like to put a gate in to have access, we would allow access, yes.
Okay.
That would be up to the school, whether they want to, because they would need to staff that gate.
They would need to staff that.
Correct.
Because I do know that a lot of parents have asked for the city to help them create that. Like you said, it would keep the students off of Jason Dwelly.
Right.
And because parents literally-
And they might get a little-
Are dropping off their students in the middle of the road and picking them up in the middle of the road.
Right. And they might get a little playground time while they're there. So.
But it's going to be a lockup of a gate, correct?
It would be a school board gate. So we would not control the gate. They would have to open it during-
School time?
During school, during their arrival and dismissal. And they would staff it with somebody there to make sure nobody's coming on school property.
Okay. So what are those dotted lines next to the proposed road there? Yes, those.
These right here?
Yes.
That's just contour lines.
Okay.
So that's like a, there's a hill there that slopes down. So there's going, some fill will have to be done to get the road level.
Yeah, I've seen that.
There's kind of a dip.
It just goes, okay.
And if we can just real quick, jump back to Alonzo Williams parking real quick. Cause again, it's something that we've discussed and it's always been up in the air. Would that fall under you and kind of this budget? Or where would that fall in for, speaking of parking for Alonzo Williams on that south lot that we own?
Um, I'd have to talk with the, with Chuck and, and Blanche and see where that would be a good fit. It could be maybe a streets project if it's on the street right away.
Okay.
Or maybe it's a facilities project if we're doing facility specific parking. But I'd have to, I'd have to talk with them to see where that fit would, would be.
Okay. If we can get that answer by next meeting, that would be, not by tomorrow, I mean by Wednesday, that would be appreciated.
And is it possible for us to get a copy of your PowerPoint?
Yes, absolutely.
Uh, the last couple of things on here are just some equipment replacement. We are looking at replacing a, a 1998 Ford Ranger. We're also looking to replace, it's the tri-deck roller finishing mower and zero turn mowers. Zero turns are the basic mowers that you see out everywhere. We've got some that are aging. The tri-deck roller, we have two of those. They're larger finishing mowers that kind of give you the, the nice cut on athletic fields. Those are starting to reach the end of their life. One of them is, they're both old. One of them is from 2009. So as far as commercial equipment lifespan, we're, we're through it. So that, that's a request we have in there. And then also the automated paint, field paint machine. We do currently have one of these in, in the inventory. We're asking for funds for an additional one. And, and really what we're looking at is, we've had great success with the one we have. The staffing time and, and efficiencies that were gained out of that, it typically takes about two hours for up to three staff to, to line a soccer field. This paint machine accomplishes that in 15 to 20 minutes with one staff member. So as we have a lot of tournaments and events that come out utilizing the fields, time is of the essence. So being able to dedicate or take that staff that was doing the field lining, move them into other areas and have one employee do that, it's been great. We're asking for a second to further that efficiency, but also so that we have a backup. Right now, if that machine were to go down for any type of repair or maintenance, we're then shifting at least three people pretty much the whole week to sometimes to get those fields prepped for, in line for tournaments that we have on the weekend or for our programming during the week. So that's where we're looking at some additional funding to, to kind of build some redundancy and add some robustness to our equipment lineup.
What's the cost of that machine?
That one is?
Wait, you're looking that up. Can we get access to these?
Yeah.
Lower, lower lines, like the 6,400 line where you're going to look at equipment and machinery. We just see in one bucket of a number. Like it would be very beneficial if we could click into that and see what that's comprised of.
It drills down and give you that total, but it doesn't give you that detail. And that's all within our Open Gov system. I'll see what I can do and see if it'll drill down any farther. Other than that, we'd have to just give you the individual budget submissions and the things like I just had her go print out for my particular budget.
Hey, I mean, when, when I first started doing this, you know, eight years ago, we had books that were this thick.
Yeah.
I mean, but it was beneficial that we could see every single piece of detail.
All the details with the descriptions. I'll see, I'll work with Open Gov to see if it can drill down farther. If not, we'll just have to give you these. Okay.
I remember last year when we were going through this, it did have the ability to do that.
Go down to the detail with the description?
Like they, they would, the example they would always give me is you can see how many pencils, whatever it is in that department. So it's possible, but you'd say there were some updates though. So that may have taken away some of that granular.
Yeah, because we did. I actually took out last year's, just to have an idea of what we would be looking at today. But, and again, no, no fault of anyone. I know you've been, you know, struggling with this new, that, what is it?
Open Gov.
Open Gov.
Open Gov. Yes, ma'am.
You know, right now it's kind of time consuming with each of you because we're seeing this for the first time.
I understand.
So that piece of equipment is $45,000.
Oh, it's 45?
Yes.
Do you know, because I see, you'd said there was a 1998 Ranger you're replacing. I guess what's our next oldest vehicle?
So we, it is something that I've gotten with our staff recently to better identify our equipment and vehicle roster so that we can better develop that replacement schedule. So.
I think, I think we've got one for all of our vehicles, police, fire. I know parks, wrecking. There's not only vehicles, but equipment.
Right.
So yeah, we've got it somewhere. We can get that to you.
Right.
Yeah, that'd be great to have. Yeah.
It's all managed in that fixed asset software, right?
What's that?
It's all managed in that fixed asset software that we, we paid for. Is that, is that?
Uh, the one I'm working on is a, is a, well, yes, it was a printout from that software, but I've made the updates on Excel as a data sheet to-
It's, Open Gov is not, not been our friend.
Well, I'm talking about is, is the fixed asset software that was a big budget expenditure, last budget of the budget before, is that Civic Plus?
No, that's an Edmonds.
Yeah, it's a separate, it's a separate tool.
That's a part of the Edmonds where the financial system is and all of that. That's a part of the Admins where the financial system is and all of that.
I mean, and the amount of money that we're paying for that, it should, it should prescriptively tell us, like, if we ask it a question, okay, when should I replace this truck? I mean, we're spending a lot of money on that software.
It, it's basically for depreciation purposes. Usually when you have your replacement schedules and your fleet plans, they're outside of that type of system. But they should be, you know, matching in regards to the number of fleet and fleet that you own. So we're working on that. We're gathering those fleet plans from the various departments so that we can have that kind of information. But it's not in the fixed asset system. And that was the Edwards?
Admins.
Ed- Admins. I know, I'm thinking of Edward, I'm sorry, Admins software.
And it's even very challenging.
We still have Admins software, we're still working with Admins software?
Yes, ma'am. That's, that's one or the other.
All right, our athletic and events budget?
So where are we going now?
Uh, we're proposing a five percent, overall five percent increase from the FY twenty-three budget. If you look at our recap here, we're looking at an eleven percent increase in personnel costs. Again, no, no new personnel uh, are added. Just like in the last budget, uh, we were able to identify some reductions in operating expenses. We are asking for a twenty-five percent increase in capital outlay, and our, again, our total increase is five percent. Some of the highlights of the, of the projects that we're looking at for this fiscal year. We still have quite a few lights that are the old style metal hall lights, and those parts for those lights to make repairs are getting harder and harder to, to procure. So we are, uh, we have developed a plan to continue uh, LED field light conversions. The first one we identified uh, for this fiscal year is soccer pads four, five, and six. That's that phase one, uh, for five hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, phase two would be soccer pads one, two, and three. I'd come back to you and ask for additional funds in FY twenty-five. And then phase three would be our baseball fields in the center quad, which are E, F, G, and H. Those are the best estimates we have right now for the cost of, of the retrofits. That's obviously can fluctuate. But this could, just kind of gives us a little outlay and runway of where we're going with the LED light phases. Sorry, I should open that up for you. Uh, we're also, I'll kind of skip down to the bottom bullet. We are also asking for an additional hundred thousand dollars to complete a current lighting project that we have in this fiscal budget. It's looking at a hundred thousand dollars additional for that project, and that's going to be to light fields thirteen and fourteen. We've also got funds to um, reinstall or recreate the senior garden at the Frank Carlton Center. And that, again, would just add a new programming and educational opportunity for our seniors. And then we have asked for some uh, additional funds to build an outdoor, basically pole barn, utility cart, storage area. Right now, our athletics division carts all sit out in open. They're secured, but they're out in the open, so they're getting elements nonstop. So we're looking for some funding to go ahead and put a, a, a structure behind our southern maintenance building to go ahead and store those uh, carts in that area. We're also looking for an additional Ford truck, uh, Ford Ranger for athletics. We have some new programming, the next bullet down, esports equipment for the Billy Dean Center. So our athletic staff is going to be more mobile than just being at the Northwest complex, so we do need some additional transportation for not only staff, but equipment to, to get around to some of the other city park properties. And that esports equipment, it's a, it's a growing trend. The Billy Dean Center seems like an ideal spot for that. We already have a media room built into that. But we would need some additional equipment, consoles, games, TVs, monitors, some additional things to get a program off the ground. And we're looking at a couple of options. One would be kind of a league-style uh, esports program, where maybe we're playing Madden or uh, FIFA. Uh, the other would be just kind of an open play program um, that uh, has some established times that we have the esports set up into the building.
What is that, esports?
So it's like a video game, it's video games. So uh, kids, adults do it too. Uh, they get together, they'll, they'll play each other in different video games. A lot of it's sports games, basketball, football.
There's actually esports stadiums now.
Correct.
Where people will come, watch you play video games.
So.
Wow. It is a huge industry.
It's getting huge, and again, the, the Billy Dean Center seems like a nice fit for that, because we already do have some, we have a media room that, that we can kind of build into. But also, this would take equipment that we could put into the whole domain room, you know, move in and out when we, when we're gonna have the program.
How much are we budgeting for that?
Uh, eight thousand dollars.
I think it would be beneficial to come up, before we spend the money, come up with how, whether it's league-style or open play, because that should kind of direct what you're purchasing, how you're purchasing, and then how you're setting it up.
Yeah, I can come back to you with that. I mean, the uh, really, we're looking initially at the open play, to try and provide an, another opportunity for, for kids in the area to, to go play um, some esports.
Have we approached any nonprofits or grants or anyone to come in and provide that?
No, not right now.
We are, okay, so we will be providing that?
We would be providing, yes. We program it with our, we program it with our staff. So our athletic staff would run that program. It's kind of like we do soccer.
How much, how many members of our staff are at the Alonzo Williams? Managers, the Alonzo Williams?
So the Alonzo Williams Park operations are managed by our recreation manager, Cynthia Edwards, Cindy Edwards. And she has a team of four.
She has a team of four?
Correct. I'm sorry, team of three. She's the fourth.
Now, if I can go back to the esports thing, the you said a team of three for Cindy?
A team of three plus Cindy, so four total.
Gotcha, okay. Will, will this open play, or however we're, we're trying to use it, is it going to be something that's available to other people that are renting the facilities and things like that, or is it exclusively for use as a?
We would, we would keep it for use as a program entity. So it wouldn't be a add-on for a rental. It would be equipment that our athletics division would run in a program style. So it wouldn't just be open, it wouldn't be open play
Under, yeah.
Un- unsupervised or unprogrammed.
Okay.
And for eight thousand dollars, how many kids or adults would be able to play?
So we'd be looking to get as many consoles as we could for that. Console's about four hundred to five hundred dollars. And then the games to go for that, anywhere from thirty to fifty dollars, so. And then we're looking at maybe some additional TVs, a couple hundred dollars, so we'd be looking outfit at, the building holds fifty. So obviously, we're limited on storage space, so we probably wouldn't go all the way to fifty, but we'd probably try to get that halfway mark at twenty-five. Twenty-six, because you want even numbers.
So do you have anything here for our community centers that we have? You know, Alonzo Williams, the Apopka Community Center, I mean, and even Frank Carlton? Do you have anything?
All right, any type of?
Yeah, do you oversee those three facilities?
Yes.
Are they listed here?
They're in the operating budget. These are just the highlights out of the budget.
Okay, they're in the operating.
So yeah, those are oper- so all those operating expenses to run those buildings are in this, built into this budget.
So this would be where any programs would be, so like, to, again, I'm, I'm stuck on this esports side of things. So if we wanted to do like a STEM program or something along those lines, that would be in this?
Athletics and events budget, correct. So this is where our, our youth soccer, our youth flag football, our basketball, all of our athletics programs are built into this budget. In addition to our operating of the facilities that we have, um, and the staffing for that. So it really encompasses our recreation staff, our athletic staff, and our event staff.
Okay. I think it would be beneficial if we did have some additional programs, um, to echo Commissioner Blaskew's point. Uh, of just other programs at not only the Billy Dean Center, but also at, um, I don't know if I, I know the VFW right now is
The Apopka Community Center.
Excuse me, thank you. The Apopka Community Center is, is um, in a dynamic place, and then also the Frank Carlton Center. I know we do some programs there, so, but I think it, it would be nice to kind of focus all three of those, kind of have a more cohesive balance between some STEM stuff. I think the esports is really cool, and we could do those at all three if we wanted to, but I know this is, you gotta start somewhere, but I do think STEM or things like that, something that engages students on, on that level as well is definitely beneficial and, and could um, it would obviously benefit all parts of our community.
Right, and we're trying to, we're trying to increase the program opportunities outside of Northwest Recreation.
Sure.
So to kind of spread the, spread it across the city. We are also looking at, there's some additional funding for some new programming, again, to kind of, as we move through this, if there's a program idea, we can
Budget it in here real quick.
Yes. Um, one of those is volley, a volleyball program, which, again, we don't have an indoor gym, so we'd be looking to partner with uh, either the school board or a local gym to, to run that program, but uh, again, we're trying to, we have a lot of programming at Northwest Recreation, which is great, great facility for it, but we are looking at our broader city outlook to, to try and increase the offerings at, at different locations, so.
Absolutely.
And the Frank Carlton's a large location for our senior programming.
So can you explain the senior garden?
So the senior garden, um, this uh, apparently there used to be a, a garden outside of that building, uh, that kind of just fell into some disrepair, so we're, we're looking at uh, rebuilding that area, uh, working with uh, extension services or some local nurseries to come in and provide some educational programming. Initially, it could be dedicated to the seniors. It is a program, though, that could be opened up to like grandparent, grandchild day, or things like that. Um, but really get the seniors involved to help maintain the garden. So that's, that's really kind of where that drive came from and, and what we're looking at for the, the senior garden.
And what did you allocate for that, the senior garden?
Uh, that was let me pull it up for you real quick. Uh, fifteen thousand dollars. So that includes some raised garden beds, some sidewalking, some fencing.
Is it gonna be focused on making sure it's
Right.
Easily accessible for seniors?
Right, and a venue, and a, and a, and a amenity, not just out in the grass type thing, so.
Why wouldn't we just have that program at the Commissioner Dean Community Garden?
We're looking at proximity of the senior programming at the, at the Frank Carlton.
Yeah, because the Frank Carlton, they do all the senior programs there.
I get that, but, I mean, we wanna, we've got a community garden as it stands right now, I mean, why duplicate?
Well, that's, that's growing, right? That's vegetables. Is that what we use the
That's uh
Billy Dean Garden is to?
Yeah, and to my understanding, that's uh, I believe that's
Run by the Big Potato?
Run by the, yeah, so.
It's run by who?
The Big Potato Foundation.
Oh, okay.
So that's, that's kind of their garden. We help maintain it, but.
By the next meeting, because again, we, we're only seeing the one side of the ledger here. We don't see any sort of revenue expectations of what you're bringing in.
So, yeah.
What trend do you see there in terms of?
So I can give you some information on that. Uh, so again, we look, uh, or I look to the National Recreation Park Association for some metrics and, and data points, uh, when we look at things like this. Uh, the twenty-twenty-three report they put out, uh, overall estimated cost recovery for Parks and Recreation organizations was twenty-six percent. Um, running the numbers on our estimated revenue numbers in the twenty-four budget compared to our estimated, or to our budget expenses. We are at twen- I'm sorry, the national average is twenty-four point six, we are at twenty-six. So we're a little, we're a little over average. If you, we haven't gotten to WeWah yet, but if you look at WeWah, the uh, estimated revenue compared to the budget that we're presenting puts us at a twenty percent estimated cost recovery. So that one's a little under.
Said differently, we're taking an eighty percent loss.
What's that?
So we're taking an eight percent loss, we're upside down operationally versus what we're getting in terms of revenue.
Right, so that's, and again, we based that, I based it off the national standard for, like, like agencies, but yeah, it is a service we're providing at a cost.
It's a service. I, I've always argued that, okay, but there's still revenue opportunities for us to explore that.
Yeah, we don't have to be locked into that number. We can continue to, to try and achieve additional growth through a variety of mediums, whether it be sponsorships, program partnerships, other avenues that maybe aren't direct impact on the participant. So those are areas that we're, I mean, sponsorship's a huge thing that I'll be working with, uh, Blanche and, and Chuck to get a nice sponsorship um, packet put together that, that we can sell.
So you mentioned it before, I think when Commissioner Nissen brought it up, but, you know, what's glaring on here is that there's no, you know, tennis court expansion. All, all that's being handled in the impact?
Impact fee, yes, so I can
The full build-out or just partial?
It's a phased plan. So I, I mean, I can jump to that now if you'd, if you'd like to get into
I didn't know if it was separate, because there's not a separate one of mine.
Right, it's not, I don't have a link for it right now. I do have a slide on it, though. Uh, this budget also includes our event expenses, so like our Saturday Sounds, our community events, and again, we were able to, to look at those.
What's, what's, what's on the stable for those community? Is, are both Philharmonic back in it?
Yes.
Saturday Sounds?
Both Philharmonics. Uh, right now, we have two Saturday Sounds a month. We do have funding to increase that if there's a need to increase it, or want to. And then we have our slate of annual events, uh, including like the holiday, uh, Light Up, the Halloween event. We do have some additional funding for, to help supplement the uh, Hispanic Heritage Festival or Celebration, and also potentially an ad for the either Juneteenth, a Juneteenth community event or Emancipation Day event. So there is some additional funding in that, in these numbers to help us accomplish those, those events.
Can I have a question? So we have the Hispanic event, where is that? That's at the Kittenland, don't surprise me.
Correct, yes.
What did you allocate for that?
That we have uh, twelve thousand dollars.
We have a five thousand dollar sponsors.
So far this year, yes.
So when we have a sponsor like that, are you, are we doing a seventeen thousand dollar event then, or is it a twelve thousand dollar event, still we're only spending seven?
We try and, we set the budget, and then we try and get the sponsorship to at least cover the budget. So it doesn't add on top of that.
Okay. I, I think because we budgeted, it may be beneficial to add to it, these are important events that are impacting our community, so I don't want to be cheap on them.
Yeah, I mean, one of the challenges is, and I'd had to get with, with Blanche on how the mechanics of a finance, from a finance standpoint, that would work to add those additional funds on top of what's budgeted.
How much do we spend on the Philhar-
Philharmonic?
Yes.
Um, that's about twenty-five thousand dollars of
Per events?
Yeah.
Okay.
The holiday ones a little bit more, and the other ones a little bit less.
I guess my point there is we can, if we're gonna spend twenty-five thousand dollars on a Christmas event at Northwest, we can spend a little bit more. And we, we can work through that, through donations and all that, to make sure those other events, although they're not at Northwest, can still be
Right, and if that's, and if that's a, a way you want to go as a budget add-on, I'd have to just work with Blanche on how that, mechanics of that would work, so that we do have the funding to pay for those added, added expenses.
And I think that's the point, right? And no disrespect to Ms. Sherman, you're looking at the check writers up here, right? So I, I, I'd say it'd be fully transparent, and what, what could be, and let us argue and squabble over
Right.
What, what the final dollar.
Right, and that would be the direction from you all on how, if you want to view that methodology of, we've committed these funds, anything on top of that we bring in is extra. If that's the methodology that the council wants to go down, we can work on the logistics of making that happen, so.
So, so if that happens, is that a budget amendment?
Right now, this is a tentative budget.
No, I mean, when, when
If that were to happen.
Approved, and then we get sponsorship, is that a budget amendment to include those additional funds if we're going to expend those?
If you're doing it in this current year budget, it probably would be, but if we incorporate it in this twenty-four proposal, then it would not be.
But, but um, to kind of piggyback off that question, if we're October second, we're having an event October third, didn't budget for having somebody come in and giving us a five thousand dollar check, it would require an amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, I was kind of trying to remember, there are two things I want to kind of address. And that is that we um, partner with different nonprofits for some of the events uh, we have, we Uh, we have, we, the recent one, Juneteenth. This past year, we did both Juneteenth and Emancipation. Um, it, do we have a budget where we're spending so much on these different events? But at the same time, what I, what's been going, what's been occurring is that those nonprofits have been coming here and asking for donations on top of us already helping to sponsor for the event.
Yeah, so I, uh, as part of this budget proposal and the itemizations, I did put, uh, some additional, I call them partner event expenses or partner event, uh, funding. Uh, and that would be, uh, you know, some of the events like the, the, um, Art and Foliage Festival. If there's some additional costs that, that we incur to help run that event as a partnered event, there is a line item now that has funds in it for that purpose.
We've always sponsored, uh, helped sponsor the Papka Foliage, but they never come in and then ask for additional donations. But we have other groups that we, we do partner with them, we do, the city does provide, um, H, a donation on behalf of the city. But then we have those same nonprofits coming in and asking for separate donations.
Do you know how much, and, and I think this is piggybacking, I'm not trying to interrupt him, I think it's piggybacking. How much we're allocating for Juneteenth and Emancipation Day? How?
So it'd be, it would be, we're looking at one or the other, but, uh, we were looking at, we've got twenty-four thousand dollars in that line. Uh, and then we also have a, a new community event expense line that has thirty-three thousand five hundred in it. So we've got some ability to build that event out, um, as a community event. But it wouldn't be the full amount for that event.
It would be.
It would be.
That's what's budgeted there and that, and that, how many other events are in that bucket?
So in that, if you total, if you total that up, that's, uh, fifty-seven, five. Um, you've got art foliage, parade, potentially Emancipation Day or Juneteenth. We've got rotary fairs if, if, uh, typically that doesn't fall into play there, but it is there if we need it. Um, and then it'd be any other additional events that, let's say the council gives direction to partner with this group. We have some funding there we can look at to, to accomplish that.
Do you know what we spent, sorry, uh, what we spent this year for the emancipation in Juneteenth?
The. We didn't spend, we, it was a donation to the, it was a donation to the group and it was fifteen thousand dollars.
So it's seventy-five hundred per, per event, basically?
It was only one event, we only did one event. It was just emancipation. The Juneteenth, we did not partner with.
Gotcha, okay.
It was just Emancipation Day.
Would, would you provide us with a list of all the organizations that?
We partner with?
That we partner with as a city, on behalf of the city. Cause I see our logo sometimes attached to different events, so that, for me, that's saying that we, as a city, are, um, sponsoring some.
Yeah, I can provide that to you for sure. Right now, it's, it's a pretty short list. It's the, the Art and Foliage Festival, the Rotary Fairs, um, and then the Parade, the Holiday Parade. Uh, and again, we're looking at, we do the Hispanic Heritage Festival.
That's only the second year and I'm still, there's a big question mark with that. But I, I don't know who's sponsoring it, I'm not sponsoring it, but who's really involved in creating the event. Um, I'm still, that's a big question mark, but that's conversations for another day. Um, the one thing I did want to ask you, because I did contact you, is have we updated our joint agreement with the O C P S? Because, um, they had reached out to me and I referred them to you, that they were looking to have a date at the Northwest Park. And I know that we did not have an updated agreement with them.
Right, so right now, the ball is in O C P S's court. Um, we've expressed interest in renewing. They are going through their side of the process to look at the agreement and then present a proposal for us to, to then look at and approve. So I'll follow up with, um, our contact over there. We haven't heard from them in a couple of weeks. This has been a process, we've kind of been, it's been going on for a while now. Um, trying to get their side of the, of the thing settled to, to how they want the agreement to look.
So on that note, did we secure that date that they were interested in?
We did put a hold on that, on, we, we, uh, you're speaking of the amphitheater date?
Right, that was the amphitheater.
Yeah, so I did, Carolyn, uh, our events manager, did reach out to him to coordinate with them on, on the date that they were looking at.
Okay.
And in, in your budget, did you, uh, look at the, uh, whatever it was called about blocking off Sixth Street and having that event?
Oh, for the, so that, I did put some, part of that new community event line.
Okay.
Would be funding that we could use for that type of event, so.
And just for my understanding where these, all these funds are going, the, do you have the numbers for what we spent last year on the foliage, the parade, the fair?
Uh, I'd have to pull that information back for you.
Thank you.
So now we are at Camp.
Camp Weewaw.
Are we at Camp Weewaw now?
Yeah, we can go to Camp Weewaw. All right, our Camp Weewaw budget, I'll jump down here to our highlights. We do have some reductions here, uh, seventeen percent reduction in personnel costs. Uh, that was from some of the reorganization we did, uh, that, uh, again, the Events Division runs this proper, this, uh, facility for us now. So one of those, uh, staff members were kind of moved, uh, into the event side of the budget. So it was just a transfer. The operating expenses were able to decrease by twenty-three percent. And the capital outlay, you'll see, we do have a large number there. But overall, it's looking at a six percent increase. Uh, so some of that was, uh, eaten back up by the operating expenses we were reducing.
Why is the deduction for the personnel costs?
So it was, uh, in the reorg, we created the Events Division and one of those person, one of the personnel there was transferred from this budget to the, uh, Events Bud, the Athletics and Events Budget. So if we're looking at Camp Weewaw.
So we have one person that's just.
We have two. Two, we have two personnel.
And?
Two full-time.
And who is that?
That's our, uh, outdoor recreation specialist, who actually just is transitioning back to a part-time capacity. So we're gonna be advertising for that. And then our recreation leader two, which is a person that helps do all the program, you know, archery, lifeguards, that type of stuff. That personnel cost, if you look at that, you say of two people, three hundred twenty thousand dollars. That cost also includes all our seasonal, uh, staff. So our activity specialists, our camp counselors, all that is rolled into that number.
How many did we have for the seasonal for Camp Weewaw this year?
So we hired, I wanna say we hired twenty-four seasonal staff.
So, and you said it before, Camp Weewaw, uh, is gonna take an eighty percent loss in the budget. Again, I'll just go back to when we, when we purchased the property, there was an understanding that we were gonna try and get as close to, close to center as possible, pay for itself. So your projections for twenty twenty-four in terms of revenue, what, what does that look like?
So it's looking around the two hundred twenty thousand dollar mark.
I, I get it from a numbers perspective, but.
Oh, where's it coming from?
Yeah.
Okay, it's comprised from, it's comprised, comprised from our summer camp programming. It's also comprised from our, uh, facility rentals and retreats. So the groups like the, uh, the Trail Life, uh, City or Trail City, uh, group, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the, the O C P S, City of Orlando's come out a couple of times. So those rental, um, retreats, there is revenue associated with that, um, as well. So we're also seeing a lot, a lot of interest coming our way for, um, individual events too. I know we had the, uh, Jingle Mingle out there last year, they rented the facility, they had a great time, they wanna come back, so there's.
Who did you have out there?
The Jingle Mingle.
Jingle Mingle.
Yeah, I'm, I'm struggling a little bit because, you know, uh, when YMCA was trying to sell it to us, their pro formas or their, well, not pro forma, their, their history would suggest that they got eighty-five percent of the operating cost of running the camp through their camp fees on an annual basis. So, you know, if, if we're not gonna, why wouldn't be able to, we'd be able to get to eighty percent versus twenty percent? Like, on the corporate retreats, it seemed like there was a lot of interest there before. Um, you, I would think that that's low-cost resources that would have to be present to accommodate folks that are there for a corporate perspective, so the margin should be pretty high on something like that. And then the camp cost, obviously, um, right-size it so that we're getting something of value back in return for the experience that they have. But to your, your point too, from an other programming perspective, why couldn't we do some larger scale for revenue-driving purposes? So Haunted Woods for Halloween or Winter Wonderland and decorate the cabins for something for Christmas or something like that, where we, we really try to drive something that's, uh.
We did have a pop, a popa con.
A pop con, yeah.
That's a private, that was.
Oh, okay.
I think, speaking of doing internally-run events like that for ticketed. So probably the closest that we've gotten so far is that Easter Trail, and that was a small entry cost, ten dollars a car. Um, but there is opportunities, uh, we are looking at a haunted trail type scenario. Uh, also, the Jingle Mingle was very successful, but there are some cabins out there that could maybe be a Winter Wonderland like you spoke of, a Santa-type experience. So it, those are all options that we can, we can continue to work towards, uh, to again, grow the revenue at that, at that property.
Well, if I can jump in here too, uh, Bradley and I had spoken a lot about this, cause it's something that I've always just said, on the Weewaw side, what's the plan here? And I don't think it's his, he doesn't need to come up with a plan. We purchased it, we need to say this is what we want. Either we want, similar to the amphitheater, we either want a small venue that is just locals only or we want a world-class event center that we need to spend a lot more on to get to that caliber, or we want this just a locals-only camp for summer. So this is being ran as if it is just a park and it's obviously a, it costs us, what, eight hundred thousand dollars a year? So it, it, I, I hear your sentiment, but we need to come up with a plan. We need to come up with a plan.
Yeah.
So there's, there's.
My, my plan was what the pro, so the, your predecessor brought forth a pro forma that mapped out that park getting into a, a balanced perspective. Meaning it was paying for itself and it wasn't punitive to the rest of the general fund. Via camp, camp tuitions during the summertime, um, corporate events. And then I don't think some of these larger-scale holiday type of things were built into that pro forma, but just for those two things, it was getting into a cost-neutral perspective. Because again, the conversation when we explored Camp Weewaw was, we don't wanna be punitive to the general fund because every dollar that we're sinking additionally into Camp Weewaw and in addition to the capital expense that we incurred, was gonna take away from operating income from the rest of our general fund departments. There was a whole bunch of head nodding and I lent my, my yes vote to that. Where this is totally counter to what that pro forma was.
I mean, the YMCA didn't sell it because of the cash count for them. There's clearly a substantial amount of deferred maintenance issues that we're still dealing with, ADA issues that we're dealing with. So I mean, we're, we're far from, I, I, I'm sure we have hundreds of thousands of dollars more to be investing in this, to really make this the center that needs to be with, if that's the goal. If that is not the will of the council, then we need to decide it needs to just, we need to stay one way or the other. Cause right now, it's, uh, it's functioning like a park and expensive like a failing venue. So we need to pick a side and go down that route.
So some of the.
I think when we discussed it, we, we looked at it, it's gonna take five years to get even halfway to break even. I'm not sure about the eighty percent part, but I, I think we, we talked about, we talked about five years down the road.
This has consistently been getting more expensive for us. It has not been performing better each year.
So, a, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Sherman, on the, on the CAFR that we got in the statistical, statistical section, the, the balance of our unreserved general fund, our general fund unreserved balance grew like nine million dollars year over year. And I don't know what the projection is gonna be for this upcoming year, but we're getting to a place where we've got a surplus of money that it's, and then again, we always talk about how we don't wanna spend operating money out of general fund reserve, even though operational savings is what funds some of the general fund reserve. But this would be a classic example of capital needs that, you know, get this to the finish line so it can get to the place where we can execute on that pro forma. I mean, if we still, from a ballpark perspective, directionally accurate, what's the capital expenditure that you think it's pencils down in terms of, okay, we, we don't have any deficiencies that would prevent us from being able to sell this camp as it should?
Well, one of the areas, I mean, the dining hall is, needs some rehab. I mean, the interior needs a, a rework, the flooring needs to be redone. The deck, which is on this, uh, list here for this fiscal year, uh, is in rough shape, so we're looking at replacing that. There's also opportunities to add a more accessible, uh, boardwalk, fishing pier, in addition to some outdoor space, event space, maybe next to the pavilion. Again, there's some work that would need, need to be done there to kind of do some retaining walls and things like that. Um, the cabins are in relatively okay shape. We have roofs that need to be replaced periodically year over year. Um, and then in this, uh, we've also put in some money to, right now, the high ropes course is not usable because of the condition of the, of the equipment. So we've got, uh, funding in here, and a hundred fifty thousand dollars to try to go ahead and rebuild the high ropes course with a different methodology. Right now, the course is set up as individual units, so you have to have a belay person, a, somebody holding the rope at each unit. Uh, I think there's like six. So from a standpoint of staffing, if you're trying to run all of them at the same time, you're bringing a lot of staff load on. This, uh, high ropes course, uh, methodology has now shifted to more of a pass-through experience. And so you start in one place, you do a climb maybe, you go through a pathway elevated. There's different challenge activities and then maybe you zipline off to the bottom. So it's got a different style clip. There's only certain areas that need belay, staff or personnel to assist. Otherwise, the person can move through it and then exit, exit the process, so. So those are, in additional funding, a little bit of additional funding to increase the low ropes area as well, add some additional, uh, team-building activities. But the high ropes are a big, a big thing if, if you're looking at retreats. Um, would be a big amenity add that could do that. Also, down the future, the, the pool is starting, I mean, it's an old pool, so it's a swimming pool, it's a lap pool. It's not really a recreation pool. Uh, we are looking at, um, trying to run some swimming programming out of that facility and maybe some open swim days. Again, that kind of, you gotta be careful on the retreat side. You don't wanna have, uh, a conflict there between a public opening and, uh, and a retreat utilizing the facility. But the pool could be an area that could be looked at as well.
I mean, it's definitely, it's a seven-figure renovation.
That's a big number.
Place needs. It, it, it's expensive, and so that's where, we need to direct a very specific plan of how we wanna go about this because we're spending three hundred thousand on capex this year. I mean, how much more, are we willing to spend that seven-figure number to make this a truly incredible event space? Or do you wanna keep bandaging it each year? Um, it, we need to come up with a plan and just follow it, I guess. And I, it, it seems it's evident that there's not a direct plan for this right now. And we need to pick something and run with it.
And was one county not willing to, for Apocca and Wakava to use the, the pool for swimming training?
Oh, they use, yes, uh, Apocca High School and Wakava have reached out to utilize the pool for swimming. So it gets used, the pool gets used and during retreats, it gets used if they wanna add the lifeguards to, to open the pool. Um, so it gets used, it's just, uh, it's not your traditional recreation pool. The, the shallowest part is five feet deep. So like for kids that are not the most adept swimmers, they gotta put a life vest on to participate in the pool.
Bradley, have you seen the, the pro forma that was?
I'll have to go, I, I'll have to go look through the files and, and pull it up and.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, to Commissioner Becker's point, we probably need to look at that and see. I know that, like, the overnight camps, which are, were a big moneymaker, we haven't met, you know, those.
Yeah, we have not met that standard, uh, either the first two years that we've run that program.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, we oughta just take a look and then at least come back with a, kind of maybe do a, you know, something before one of our council meetings to talk about. you know, something before one of our council meetings to talk about, you know, some things that we need to, how we need to address that.
Yeah, we can work, if you'd like to workshop this item, we can certainly prepare that.
Cemetery.
So we're done with Camp Weewaw?
If you have any other questions.
I mean, do we have a plan for the new year, for the new budget year? I mean, we're talking about what it's going to cost us, but do we have a plan? In other words, are we planning anything other than what we've already been doing? Are we increasing anything?
We're, I mean, we're going to run the summer program again. We're also.
Day and night?
Day and night, yep, we've got that budgeted. We also are looking at additional programming such as like an archery class or archery program, archery course for beginners. We're trying to see if we can develop a new rental platform. Again, the challenge is deciding between the park-style amenity or, or the retreat rental route.
Well, I think that's a, that's, and that's what I, that's kind of my point very specifically is that we've been in neutral there because we didn't know which side of the fence we wanted to go on. Do we want to create an incredible event space that's for private events and high-end vacations, things like that? Or is it more community-based there where I can go there daily to do swim lessons with my kids and kayak with my friends and whatever it may be, or, you know, smores at night with the community? We need to dictate what that is going to be, and then we need to fund it one way.
So I'll verbalize my opinion on the matter.
Thank you.
So the, the day camp and the overnight camping experience should be premier.
Get, I need adjectives for premier.
Should be, we should have a backlog, a waiting list of people that are so encouraged and jazzed up to come to Camp Weewaw every summer for day camp and night camp that, great. That's going to drive up a tremendous amount of revenue, again, if you believe the YMCA numbers. Again, that's, now, that's two months out of the summer. That's going to be heavily unavailable to people that want to come during the day to come and, and be at the camp. I get that. Then combined with that, you've got your corporate deals, which a lot of the corporate functions prior like a morning to early afternoon type of setup during a weekday when, let's be realistic, there's not going to be a whole bunch of people going out there anyways. It doesn't interfere with the school system. So then you have your aquatic folks that are probably going to be more in the afternoon. Get some of those coming in, either private clubs or the schools that you mentioned, but obviously there's a cost to us to run it. So I'm, I'm assuming that OCPS is providing some sort of financial benefit to us. And then the other pieces would be some of these big programs. So like haunted woods, something like that would be every weekend for the month leading up to Halloween or something. It's kind of like Halloween, Universal.
As I said, they do it for months beforehand and, yeah.
You have, how many cabins do we have out there? That's an opportunity for how many different haunted, haunted mansions, you know, if you will. The winter wonderland thing, that might be similar to what we did with the festivals of the trees and stuff. It's an opportunity for everybody to kind of say, hey, you organization, you sponsor this cabin, or you sponsor this cabin. Some of that we retain for operational costs, some of that goes to whatever charity of choice that our partners want to send it to. Something along those lines, but I think if you put that out for an annual plan on your calendar and say, hey, if we do these things and we do them well, I think we get closer, we close that gap materially into a more of a breakeven type of proposition.
And is that what, and I appreciate you clarifying that because I took a lot of notes there, just that helps that. Because everyone except for me was up here when it was purchased, so again, what was everyone's intentions? And, and let's go that route, and I do think it would be worthwhile to workshop this a little bit more as well to get real detailed on the amount of money we're willing to spend on this.
So do we run camps during the like winter break, spring break? Where, where do we run those camps?
So the winter break camp we ran, and spring break camp we ran at the Billy Dean Center. And we did bring them for a field trip to the Camp Weewaw.
Is that something we can consider to do at Camp Weewaw?
Yeah, we could consider, it goes back to staff, making sure we got the seasonal staff that can accommodate that. But those are programs that we can look to add. So again, you're going to add some costs, but add additional revenue generation. I don't know if we'd do an overnight camp in the winter break season, but a day camp, we could look at holding out there.
Just day camps.
Right.
We also had some, some programs with the fifth graders that was overnight, like one night, Thursday nights or something. We've done a.
Yeah, we've done some of the schools have reached, some of the PTAs have reached out and done some programming, or done some rentals with us. Those have been more rental-based programs. And again, we've had a lot of, we've had a good amount of retreats coming in to utilize the property.
What are our rental rates as opposed to what it's costing us when we have these organizations?
I, I can bring all that back to the workshop and, and present it to you so you get a good idea of what that looks like and what we're doing there.
Is the, the kitchen area in the large pavilion, is it functional?
The kitchen in the dining hall?
Yes.
Yeah, it does, there's some things that we could do to improve the kitchen, some, some replacement of some tables and things, some, some prep areas. That is functional. We are also, that is a revenue opportunity as well to maybe put out a, a bid for some select caterers to be the option for some of these groups when they come in for these higher-end events. And again, a revenue split would be negotiated into those contracts. But, so there's an opportunity to that too.
Okay. Well, let's do a workshop of some sort with that. I think that'll help, hopefully it'll help take a little bit of weight off you too and get a little direction there.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to, to discuss that further and make sure we're, we're aligned with, with the wish of the council.
Am I in the cemetery?
All right, we're at the cemetery now.
Oh, here it is, facilities, and then we're going, okay. I'm still trying to figure this out here. I did click on the picture. And then, okay.
Okay, we're at the cemetery. So just reviewing the budget highlights, we do have a slight decrease in the, in the requested budget for the 2024 year. This is predominantly due to the decrease in the funding requested for the capital items. We have two capital items on the list. The old church section of the cemetery has some old dilapidated chain link fencing. So we'd be looking to kind of redo that fencing, remove the chain link, redo the fencing to beautify that area. And then we've added some funding in for some additional columbariums to go along with the two that we've, that we've got coming. So to kind of build out that columbarium area and have those additional offerings for, for people. Small one percent decrease in operating expenses, but again, a, a year into this, we were able to, to sharpen the pencil a little bit on those costs. Any questions on the cemetery?
Where the. Where that ditch is. Do we need to fix that area in? Because I've noticed there have been people that have been using the, the canopy areas there, but that's a big drop-off that's on the back.
Are you talking about where the little gazebo is?
Yes.
Yeah, we're looking at that, I think there definitely needs to be a fence in there. So I'm going to have our, I'm going to work with our public services to see what's really needed at that location because it is a pretty, it's a pretty good drop-off there. And that's the area that we're looking at, these columbariums to be installed, so we're going to make sure it's safe for the higher traffic volume.
The, the funds that I had moved over to, I don't know if it's a specific account, but do we figure out how to do that correctly, kind of prepay for, that's been figured out? Yes, thank you.
And then where do we stand on the Bay Ridge conversation?
So Park Superintendent Donnie Rowland and I met with the owner of the Bay Ridge Cemetery two weeks ago. We actually got our eyes on the property and, and kind of what we're looking at there. It is a little more extensive of a cleanup than initially I had looked at when I first visited. So there's some, there would be some substantial costs to, to do that. So obviously, we talked about a fencing, fencing area in approximately around a hundred thousand dollars for the decorative metal fence.
Why would we have to fence it?
I think you'd just want to secure the property, not necessarily like with a giant chain of lock, but set the boundary of the cemetery. I guess you wouldn't have to fence it if you, if you didn't want, but it would be city property that.
Well, let's, let's just do order of operation on this one. So was she in agreement with what was being proposed?
She would, she would definitely divest of the property.
So if that were, and that worked itself out, the cost to just clear it and get it right in terms of the aesthetic?
It would have to be, because there's so many overgrown headstones and markers that you can't really see right now, you couldn't use equipment in there. You'd have to go in and do it by hand, and we're talking about a two-acre property. We would have to get a, a firm quote from a contractor to, to say, here's what we're looking to do. It would probably be a pretty pricey, pricey endeavor.
Similar to what Commissioner Ness asked of me, quantify that.
I'd have to come back to you with an actual number on what that would look like.
Are we talking five figures, six figures?
No, not, I, I don't think six figures, but I, I think you're probably at least, I mean, you're talking two acres of hand-clearing shrubs and, and undergrowth and things like that. I mean, it's, it's a cost. One idea, the, our park superintendent had an idea of maybe renting some goats to, to kind of clear it out. But, I mean, again, that's a.
But then.
You need a fence. You need a fence at that point.
Well, put them on a leash.
Yeah, right.
They'll chew through that too.
One of those wireless fences. The, but then, once it got to a steady state from an operational perspective, it wasn't much of an opex, I don't recall.
It would be, we'd need somebody to go, we need a contractor going to maintain it on a routine basis. Two acres isn't that big of a property at that point. You do have a lot of string trimming though with the, with the, with all the headstones and things like that, but. And you, I mean, it's, it's kind of an unknown until you get all that stuff cleared out of there.
Would we be able to determine that cemetery, when the time comes, as a historical cemetery and have some funds from some sort of historical society for it?
I think the reference for that would be to the historical, the Apopka Historical Society. We'd, we'd want to roll them in to see if there's any opportunities out there for that type of thing. I think the first thing would be, you know, is there a, is there a want to invest the money to take the property on and, and clean it up and then put it on to?
Yeah, I guess that's the question for the council. I mean, I, I, I believe that there is value in it because there are people that were founders of this community or names within this community, and for it to just sit there and disrepair, I think it's, I think it's worth the spend.
It's one of my questions, do we know who's buried there?
So that's another challenge. When meeting with the owner, she has no records other than some of her memory on her family that's in the spot and some of the pioneers. She said there's some pioneers that are buried out there, so there's some like key names that she knows, but she doesn't have any plot maps or anything like that. It sounds like at one point, people just started burying in there without necessarily approval from the, the property owner. So I'm not sure, until we clear, until all the spaces were cleared and the headstones were identified, you still might not get the full list of who's out there.
So how, out of, just out of curiosity, how did they record their dead?
I have no idea.
No, you don't know either, right? They just died and buried them?
I'm not sure. She, she had no records to provide for that.
That's kind of strange, okay.
I was thinking too, I mean, it, this, to help identify and, and kind of give historical context, bring in the historical society up front, maybe they can come together too. We can volunteer to clean up the area, maybe save some costs there so that we can get in a good path that.
Well, that's one option. We can also, if we don't want to full-on go to acquiring the property, we can try and establish a partnership with some, with a, a, a help group, a local high school group, a nonprofit, a Boy Scouts group, try and get Orange County involved, try and do a partnership to get it cleaned up first, and then.
Kind of hand it off.
But it's, it's up to the wish of, of the council on how.
I think the private, like the Boy Scouts and stuff like that, it came down to a liability issue before with the current landlord.
So those would be discussions also, we'd have to make sure that.
So then we, well, because that brings up a whole that I didn't even think about, the, just the, the context of property rights. Is this subdivided already? Is this a separate parcel, or are we going to have to go get this divided and cut out and from the current property effectively?
And it's, it is that property, so it's already.
Okay, so it's not part of somebody else's parcel.
It's already Bay Ridge, it's already parceled for Bay Ridge Cemetery, it's, it's there. Yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I would just, not to belabor the point up here, I would just say, hey, make some broad assumptions here upfront. Well, let's, let's just assume that there's folks in that cemetery that are, you know, members of this community that are worthy of us contemplating this. With, with that being said, I mean, even the people that are there, even if they weren't contributors to Apopka, they deserve to have the right burial place and the respect there. So I think of us earmarking a certain allocation for this purpose, even if we don't spend it, even if we have to do continued due diligence, I think it, I, I think it would be worthy and prudent for us to put some sort of money to this from a clearing it, getting it to a respectable-looking place. And then, you know, it's the minimal opex that we described, I think, in the last meeting.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was like a hundred fifty thousand dollars that.
I don't even think it was that much.
Or a hundred twenty, maybe. I can pull that back up.
Okay. So that's what we had earmarked, a hundred and twenty?
There's nothing earmarked in this.
I, yeah, I was, yeah.
Is it, and it's not, it doesn't have frontage on a road. Is it, is it, is there an easement to get there? What, what does that look like?
It's frontage on Joey McGuckin.
Yeah, there's a road there.
Gotcha.
It's a small road.
But aren't we taking Joey McGuckin, converting that into Sadler?
Yeah, and there's, I mean, there's a lot of development.
So this will be right on Sadler then?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's directly fronting that road. So I mean, I think it would be in our best interest too, from a, once, you know, you don't, you're not going to want that road there, and then you see this unmaintained, oh, by the way, I can see some headstones poking through leaves and, and trees. I think, I think it's advantageous for us to, to make it right. I, I get it that we don't own the land, I get it that it's Orange County right now, but we have a chance to do something with it and, and have a good news story on it.
But if we take ownership, would it not then become a state of Apopka, you know?
That's what I'm saying. Then it's an opex point of view. Like, I, I don't subscribe to the idea that we need to put a, a fence necessarily. And, and I think the last statement was made is if you just turn it to a kind of historical tribute-type of cemetery with no further burials permitted since we own it and we wouldn't be.
Right, yeah, I mean, I would not recommend burying anybody.
Exactly, so then it becomes, if, if anything, you could plant some potocarpus hedges around it instead of putting fence, I mean.
And this is going to be developed around completely, right? And we can have a developer pay for the fencing. It's not that hard to ask them to do that.
I, I think we want to fence it.
Move from the fencing or move, move with the fencing?
He's saying to fence it, to add a fence to make sure that there is a fence.
Yes. We don't want it to become a dumping ground.
I mean, there's no telling what is actually out there right now until we get the, until the.
Is it laughable to say if there's twenty-five K put into this budget for the purposes of clearing the land and getting it to a, a maintainable state? Is twenty-five K laughable?
Yes. Not, not for two acres.
I've dealt with some dry retention ponds and some of the costs to clean those up, and they're running into the fifty to eighty thousand dollar range.
Okay.
And that's not even two acres.
So if you did fifty, that could get a, a decent earmark to then get bids on that, on that project.
Yeah, now Jim did just bring up the fact that, again, it is not in the city proper right now. So the owner would have to annex to the city, which does involve some costs, which we'd have to go back to her and kind of outlay that process. But I mean, if there's a, an amount we want to earmark in the budget.
Is it eligible to be annexed?
It is eligible, yes.
Okay. So that, I would suggest the property owner annex it first before we invest any money in.
And we can.
Part of the issue is that the property owner can't afford the expense of.
Well, the expense is what, a couple thousand dollars for application and all that? Yeah, I don't think.
Twenty-five hundred dollars.
Even if we didn't incur that on their behalf, I don't think that would be a problem. I'm sure we could get. I'm sure we could get some folks to.
Yeah, but the but the $6 billion elephant in the room is Orange County. Why aren't they, I mean, I I probably would have no problem maintaining if it's $5,000 a year, but why shouldn't they pay to clean it up? And then and then then they get it cleaned up. We want to annex in, spend $5,000 a year. I got no problem, but I can't believe that we're going to annex piece property to take on $120,000 of cleaning. And then, yeah, it's only $5,000 a year, but it's still it's $5,000 for the rest of our lives that that we we don't own it. We've never owned it. We know it's a problem and Orange County hasn't done anything to the to the this point. So I don't.
No, and and that's all fair. I mean, it's it's not in all fairness to Orange County, it's not Orange County property either. They would be making.
Well, it's in Orange County, it's not in.
No, 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 I get that, but I'm it's a private ownership parcel.
Right.
At the end of the day. Is either Orange County or the city of Apapka going to stand tall and say, there's a cemetery with with residents that are buried? Do we want to honor those folks? I I guess that's at the end of it. Granted, there's going to be a whole bunch of people that say, Kyle, you're off your rocker. We shouldn't be spending taxpayer money on this sort of stuff. I I get it and I can't argue with them necessarily, but I just think that it's what entity stands tall. We're closest to that because it's more part of our community, I would argue, versus Orange County.
And there's I did to to that point as well. I don't think it's the same concept of buying camp. We offer 4.7 million and it losing 200,000 plus a year, 800,000 a year. It it's the same concept. It's just how are you going to use it? How do you value it?
Well, there's no value, there's zero value and there never will be any value. It's always a liability.
Well, I right now.
PNL statement, that's correct, yeah. But again, from a human perspective, there's value.
But I I think. I think it's worth exploring.
I think allocation of 50K, again, this is not, we're not writing the check. We're earmarking money for this purpose should it run its course. We have money that's allocated for that that purpose. If we run it to ground and it doesn't work out, then that 50K gets reallocated somewhere else like normal course.
Well, I think if you're going to be realistic about it, you probably need more closer to 75,000. Then I have no problem there as long as it's annexed first.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I fully agree with that. We don't.
We annexed in in our possession before we.
Yes.
Do any cleanup.
Correct.
So the wish is 50 or 75,000?
Hey, if Commissioner Smith wants to do 75, I'm not going to say.
I'm just being realistic. We're talking about two acres of some serious cleaning.
And to do it right, too.
Seventy five.
Because there may be people that.
Remember, you can't take equipment in. It's all got to be done by hand. So it's going to be labor intensive.
Yeah.
And then the debris has got to be hauled away somewhere.
Okay, so is the 75 for the clearing or the fencing?
For the clearing.
Clearing. No fencing yet. The 50 came from the fencing. So just want to make sure.
The what now?
The clearing, I thought, was 150 to 150,000.
No, that they Commissioner Becker initially said 50,000 for clearing. Or for cleanup. So now we're at 75.
Yeah, we need to do 75.
And remove the fencing.
So it's 75 for clearing earmarking that?
Yes.
And that's after the annexation.
Correct.
Anything else on cemetery?
That was Bay Ridge. So is someone going to reach out to the owner and?
Yeah, I'll continue. I'll continue the conversations with the owner to see next steps. I mean, I'll get community development involved with the process on how to annex. If there's interest at that point, continue that conversation.
Yeah, if you could let us know and then we'll doll in for the application, all that stuff, because I I think there's a groundswell of folks that might, you know, kind of a group donation kind of.
And we'll also sharpen a number on what the hand clearing might look like of the property.
And just to clarify, because I haven't, we haven't gone over it or there's. In the salaries that you're quoting for the budget, is that inclusive of salary increases and things like that, year over year, cost of living increases? What does that look like overall?
It does include a merit increase.
And and what's that up to?
Up to 6%. But, you know, we average it at five, but it's up to 6%.
And that's, these are assuming 5% basically?
As an average.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we got Facilities Maintenance Division.
We got, what do we have? Facilities. Parks and Parks. Where's facilities?
All right, Facility Maintenance, overall budget, we are seeing a 37% increase in the budget from 20 FY '23. A lot of this cost is going to be some of the capital outlay projects that I'm going to highlight here momentarily. We have a slight increase on the personnel, as Blanche mentioned, with some merit increase. Increase in operating expenses. A lot of that's, you know, contractual service. We had to add some additional inspections and testing and things at the Camp Weewall property. Also, some increased janitorial service. There's some properties that we didn't have appropriate service for. We did add some additional funding for increased city building and sidewalk pressure washing services. So just to try and keep the outside and lead ups to the buildings a little bit more aesthetically pleasing. And then we have quite a few items for the fire department needs. We've got our some renovation of the fire department admin and station one restrooms to get them up to ADA standard. We've got new flooring at the fire department training center, the Gilam Center, to replace that carpet with tile surface, something a little bit more durable.
Is that in here? This? Not in here. I'm looking. This is not very friendly. There it is, because it's all the way in the bottom.
It's at the, yeah, the very bottom.
Thank you, at the end.
We've got some funding to do some remodeling of Station Four to try and better the living arrangements in that facility now that we have more staffing on property. Additional driveway parking enhancements at Station Three and Four, again, to help with the additional staff that are at those locations. We've got some hoods that need to be installed or reinstalled at some of the fire stations in the Billy Dean Center. We've got a generator replacement at Fire Station Three. We've got additional fencing, security fencing at Stations Three and Four around the parking lot area. We also have positive air pressure, which are HVAC upgrades to ensure that the air pressure from outside in the bay does not enter the living space. We've got funding for that at $15,000 per station. And then we also have the installation of the red light, green light delay at Station Five, which is basically a a system that as the door is opening and they're installed in some of the other stations already, but as the door is opening, it gives you the red signal and the green signal when the the door is clear. So. Outside of that, we also have an ADA City Hall elevator upgrade. We have some HVAC replacements, large systems at the community center that are due. They're existing from the they're existing units from the build. So we need to go ahead and replace those. We have a generator replacement at the Harmon Tower.
Was that the tower we were trying to give away? What are we doing with the tower? I mean, for a long time I was hearing that it was going to be replaced.
I'm not sure. I'd have to defer that to the IT. So this would be a replacement of that generator to make sure in the time of a power loss, we don't lose connection service.
Are we upgrading that tower or are we doing, I mean, is it? So we're just keeping it going. I remember there was talk that they were replacing it in another location. Is that still a consideration? Is it at its top performance? I I remember there were some issues with it. Robert, if you can just kind of.
So the tower itself has was overloaded just with hardware itself. We're actually only down to one vendor on there right now due to T-Mobile and Sprint merging. But we only have a T-Mobile antenna on there, so the load on it has certainly gone down from the wind load that is has certainly gone down since they've taken their other antennas off. So it's not going anywhere. It's a 50-year galvanized tower. It's been up since the mid to late 80s. It was just recently inspected and one of the findings that we need to address, and you'll see them in the budget tomorrow, is we need to work on one of two things, either painting it to meet the FAA requirements or we need to put tower lighting to appropriately address the issues we're having with it as far as the AA or FAA requirements. So the tower itself is inspected. It's not in horrible shape. I've checked the guy anchors. You know, at this time, it does not need to be taken down. And the thought was if we were moving, if that property was going to come for sale, then it would certainly been a possibility we would have to move it.
Okay. So it's functioning at its peak performance at its.
It's functioning. The generator certainly has seen better days. And so if that tower is going to remain there and even if it was moved, the generator could certainly be moved with it.
Thank you.
So I'll, like I mentioned, a lot of the capital upgrades and and that increase of 206%, a good portion of that was dedicated to to some of the fire department needs that were identified for facilities maintenance to to help take care of.
Two things. On the elevator upgrade, is that going to be a new car altogether or?
I believe it's just ADA enhancements. So right now, when you go on elevator, there's no signal or indicator that says you've reached the floor that you're at. So it's some of those enhancements and I believe some new buttons and panels and things like that to to make it fully ADA.
So you jog my memory or my thought when I saw elevator on your list. So whenever I'm in that elevator, first of all, it's pretty drab anyways, but.
And we're not making it taller.
You've got you've got three walls in there that are blank canvases. Can we get some poster frames or some sort of framing in there where you can easily switch out things that we would want to advertise to whoever's using that elevator? You know, we've got so many applicants, people that are engaging with our city hall. It would be a good opportunity for us to advertise different things within that elevator. I think that would be a pretty low.
I mean, we can certainly, we can certainly look into that. And as we're going through these upgrades, maybe do an add on to to do some sort of advertising bulletin that we can put city and city information into if that's could be, I mean, it's a small elevator, so.
Not going for long trips, but.
Short trip, but.
Still, I mean, just something to jog people's interest. And then too, to your point, I mean, it jumps off the page that a lot of these are fire department focused. Do we have any other critical issues from a facility standpoint that you don't feel like we've got in the budget to be able to address?
Well, we're, oh, from a outside of fire standpoint. I mean, we we're going to, we've got roofs and things that are going to be coming. We do have some repairs at the Billy Dean Center that we're going to have to have to do. We're looking at possibly getting that out of the operating budget though as a repair. But I mean, we're AJ is here and we've really went through the budget this year to try and, again, better identify and better group expenditures into itemized lines so we can better plan as we move forward what areas are really getting hit hard as we as we continue on, but.
Yeah, because like, sorry to mix the waters again with Camp Weewall stuff, but the what you described around the kitchen and the decking and all that sort of stuff, is that already budgeted?
So the in the Weewall budget, decking rebuild was budget is budgeted in this year.
What about the kitchen?
The kitchen, the appliance, the appliances are fine. It's some of the tables. We would look to try and get some of that out of our operating operating expenses to kind of upgrade some of those because those aren't huge ticket items. They're not capital expensive by any means. You're talking a couple hundred bucks that we've built in for some equipment in that budget. I mean, the biggest, the biggest one that's going to come back in front of you when we have a solid number is we've got the temporary kitchens installed at the fire stations. We're going to come back to you with the rebuild cost for that. We have a contractor that's now piggybacked that is looking at those projects for us to give us an actual number on what that would what that's going to look like.
But as it stands, all the other facilities within our.
We do have, I'm sorry, we do have money in for restroom renovation at the Public Services Warehouse, which is one of the ones that's been a problem for a little while. We've had some leaking issues there and some nasty looking tile and some stuff that needs cleaned up. So we do have $20,000 committed to do that. And then there is some additional funding to improve some of the janitorial services through some of those locations to make sure we're hitting the mark.
Yeah, because some of those are non-negotiable, right?
Right, I mean.
Toilet facilities, I mean, you would think that's just table stakes of.
Yeah.
I come to do a job, I'm expecting my toilet's going to work properly.
Right, yeah.
And then safety, obviously, the mold and all that sort of stuff, roofs, all that is accounted for and you feel comfortable with that?
Right, and I think we're good. We're, we are, you know, as the year goes through, there might be emergencies that pop up that we'll have to come back to you to present. But I'm also working with AJ to get a better, kind of like we're doing with the fleet program, get a better program installed on the roof statuses, roof report, replacement schedule, same thing with our large equipment, so HVAC systems, electrical systems, some of those things that those costs, they have an end of life. So put a better plan together on how we're going to replace those so that every year we're knocking a couple out. We do currently do that in this budget. There's funding in the capital for HVAC replacement. It's kind of as an as needed right now. I'd like to transition that to more of a structured rotation of here's what we're doing and still have a little bit in reserve in case we have a blowout unexpectedly. But.
Last question, sorry to comment to your time. The fleet, like a fleet maintenance building, I know that had been on a wish list for past budget budget years. Where do we stand with with that?
So the public services is really running that the construction side of that project. I do know they're in, they are in design of that fleet facility. We'll be involved from a maintenance standpoint of when the design is getting rolling along. From a maintenance standpoint, recurring, what do we see that might be some tweaks? And then from there, we'll add that into the contractual services that we need when the building comes online. So it is, I do know it is, it is currently being designed. And that was through funding this year's budget.
What about the storage of a lot of our equipment, the machines and that? I mean, I know we've had some theft of some expensive equipment. Am I correct in saying that?
We've had some theft at at the Northwest Complex. Some of this will be creating a better structure for some of those carts and a better yard area. And really, it's just trying to secure it as best we can, do the do the right things, make sure we're not leaving keys out in open, make sure we're locking gates, make sure we have thick chains and things like that to try and mitigate that. But we we've had a couple here and there that that have been an issue.
And out of curiosity, I see you were fencing five, Station Three and Four. Why not five?
Five, well, three and four were the main issues right now we were looking at. Five has really good lighting. It's also got very good frontage to Jason Dwelly. So just with the money that we're looking at right now, we're looking at hitting the two hot items, the Station Three and Four, getting those taken care of. And then if we want to progress down through the rest of them, we can, we can move that move that way.
All right, and how we own the lightning indicator at Billy Dean?
Our master electrician, who's now on staff, he's about three weeks in, he's going to be doing those installs and Billy Dean's one of them here in the next week or so is the plan.
All right, and then my last question, there's money set aside for some pressure washing of some of the buildings and sidewalk. There've been a couple city council meetings where individuals have spoken about, we have buildings that are not up to par, like the one warehouse that's that's Alpha John's Road that has a lot of graffiti. Are we doing anything to correct that?
Wasn't that the building that we allocated to the church?
I believe. Oh, that didn't.
The warehouse?
Didn't pan out.
Oh, okay, so that's the first time here. Oh, okay, so that's the first time hearing of it. Because last I heard, it was, we had allocated or we had voted to allow them to use it as a, as a warehouse.
So we can look at that, those prop, that type of property and see what, what cleanups we can do with the funding we have. We also do have, that reminds me, we do have funding in this budget request to handle some of the properties like the Conley House and the McBride Building and get those taken out.
Talking about the Conley House, did we get the design yet for that? I mean, update, I did ask for an update on that.
Yeah.
We've got three, yeah, we've got three designs.
We've got three concepts and I can, if, if you'd like, we can add that into the workshop session if you'd like to do that and...
Yes, I would like that.
So we do have three tentative designs that, that are ready for you all to look at.
But to that end, I mean, are they, do you have them in the budget?
They're not budgeted right now, no.
So what is the design for it?
Well, didn't we have, I still can't believe that someone wanted to donate a million dollars to help us build?
I, I do believe there is a family that is potentially interested in donating to the project for the, for the building. So we've got concepts right now and I can share those with you and, and...
So I will say this, all along I thought that that graffiti building off of 429 or 451 was something that we had allocated to a well-known church. Had no idea that, that fell through. And the reason why I'm saying that is because it's been mentioned to me a few times and I'm responding, no, the church has got it. They're going to do it. So I'm just learning right now that the church doesn't have it, we have it.
And that'll have to be an area that I look at for cleanup. If it's something we need to put into our roster for our contractor to maintain any turf or landscape, just to keep it at a baseline.
Remind me again what the use is?
What's that?
What are we using it for right now?
Nothing.
So why wouldn't we demo it?
We can go that route too if that's...
Like it's an eyesore. I don't know why we wouldn't demo it for not, because before it was always, we're storing pipe or trash cans.
That's the last I heard.
But if we're not using it whatsoever, again, I, I don't know what's going to be planned. Well, it's harrier because to try and connect it to the birding park across the way, that probably wouldn't make any sense, but I don't, just to get rid of it. Like what is that going to cost?
I can work up a number on that. I mean, it's...
It's, it's...
It's going to be a six-figure number. It's going to be expensive.
Yeah, it's a big bill.
It's, if we have no use for it, right, if we have no use for it and it's really an eyesore, I would prefer it to be demo and just...
I can work, I can work with AJ. We can work up a number for what that would look like budget-wise to bring back to you.
Well, I'd say we demo that building, put, you know, get some artists to do on that reclaimed water reservoir to get the big mural like some of these other cities have done because that's the entrance to our, the wildlife.
Why don't we just do it on that building?
Oh, no. You've seen that building?
You want to spend like $300,000 to rip down a building and do nothing with it and then...
It's a liability from my perspective. I mean, if people get in there and do...
Have you been to that location and that building?
No, it's supposed to be secured.
It's, it's... It's not...
It's in real bad shape.
Well, what I can, what I can do is I can work up a number with our facilities administrator, AJ, on what that could look like to demo that building. For the meantime, I'll get with our park superintendent. We'll go take a look at it, see if it's something we can do, some cleanup at this point.
Paint it or something.
Or at least get, make sure it's as aesthetically pleasing as possible for this point and then kind of come back with you with a number.
Yeah, I'd have to go back and look at that building, but I know it was in really bad shape.
I meant the 1966 building. I mean, that could have asbestos in it. Tearing it down could be...
No, it's, all it is is, it's just cement. I mean, it's...
On the inside too?
Oh, yeah, it's solid cement. It's not going anywhere. If you wanted to fix it up, yeah, it's still going to cost you a lot of money, but it's a, it's a usable building. We even tried, I tried to get the avian reconditioning to, to take it on.
Use it in some capacity?
I, I don't know why they wouldn't because to me, if they're right across the street from our birding park and the Wildlife Drive, you could, you could charge a ticket, you know...
A lot of options there.
Oh, there are a lot of options for anybody, you know, Audubon, they didn't want it, which I, I don't understand because you could, you could seat about 300 underneath the, the main building. It's a, it's a, it'll be there 100 years from now if we want, you know, if you want it to be there. It's, it's the big cement eye beams that are, I mean, they're, that's substantial. Now, everything underneath, it's not, you know, like the bathrooms are terrible. I mean, they're, had to be gutted completely. And I mean, it's, it's, yeah, it's not in good shape, but the structure itself is, will be there 100 more years.
So I think let's have a conversation about what we can do with it. We can do something with it.
That, that's it. It's, let's look at it and see what can we do, but to let, to continue to let it sit there looking that deplorable is, is not good for us.
Let's clean it up.
Yeah, I mean, that's basically, you know, again, all this time I just thought someone else had it.
All right. This is one of those departments or divisions that, you know, as we continue to grow, we may be looking at some additional staffing down the road to help with administration of, of our work order system and, and kind of the procurement side of things, purchase orders, requisitions, those type of things. Any additional questions for facilities maintenance? All right, last one. I've got the capital. Capital Recreation Impact Fee Capital Budget. This is where we're looking at providing funding to do a phased install of new soccer fields at the Northwest Recreation Complex and also a phased install of new tennis courts and pickleball courts adjacent to the Northwest Complex. We've got a kind of slide here to describe the current process proposed. Phase one is, is identified in the green. We're looking at doing the final grade and construction of two additional fields and installing four additional field lights. That would then the following year, come back, do an additional two fields and the year after do the final two with some additional parking added for that area.
And in, in the process of those additional fields, where's closest restroom?
So the closest restroom is located right here.
Yes.
We're looking at this area for parking. There is opportunity to put another restroom potentially in this area here as we move through the plan. I think you'd look to that possibly, if you wanted to add a restroom, possibly at phase three.
So this is right behind, oh, I see. That's, this is now right behind Rock Springs Ridge.
So this is the parcel that we mowed down last year and are keeping at a lower rate. So again, looking at a phased process here to, to build tennis and pickleball facilities. Year one, looking at putting in five courts and it says five pickleball courts. I apologize. Pickleball courts actually take up two courts. Two pickleball courts can fit on one tennis court. So you're looking at about 10 pickleball courts in that area. Phase two would, would add an additional five tennis courts and 10 pickleball courts. Again, caveat, if, if it looks like 10 pickleball courts are satisfying the needs, we can always add more tennis courts and do a larger amount of tennis courts if that's the way we want to go. And some additional sidewalks in phase two. And then phase three would be the, an actual building, pavilion and parking lot. The phase one would just be a grass parking area with some ADA accessible parking spaces.
So the parking lot, or that's all phase three you're saying?
The actual full-on parking lot would be a phase three. Phase initial would just be grass parking with some ADA handicap spots. So this is looking to take our rec impact fees and put a process together that starts bringing these facilities online, again, in a phased approach, but in a quicker timeframe.
And so how, how long is it going to take to put in those additional fields in that tennis court and pickleball court?
So if we started day one on October 1, we'd have to get a bid out on the street to have the fields constructed, installed. And then you're likely growing those fields in because of size. So we'd have a grow period of a couple months.
What, and I get it for budget perspective, October 1st, but why can't we start that process now?
Oh, we can, no, I mean, we can start that process, but the funds aren't available officially until October 1 to, to actually utilize, so... To draw against a requisition, we'd have to have the funds.
And my only hangup on the parking stuff is, is as a strategy, grass parking lots, I don't think should be our strategy. Like I, let's do a, a number of parking spots that less than what the full build-out is, but build within the same footprint that you're going to do anyways. Because I think, I think the residents just want us to show, yeah, they're planning for future growth. I get that, but to have a grass parking lot, it just seems like it's...
I mean, maybe we can phase the parking the same, I'm sure that, that's your point. Phase the parking the same way, so we phase it in three phases.
Right. I was just trying to get the biggest bang for the buck out of the facility. And making do with grass parking at the start would be one option. We can go back and look and see what actual spaces are going to do to that number. It might impact what we can pull out of that $1.2 million.
Yeah, because I think from an experience, like if someone goes to these new pickleball or tennis courts and they drive up and they're pulling into a field, like huh, did they not think to put parking in? Like, I'm just trying to think of what...
These are the comments we will be getting. Yeah. I understand that and I'm just trying to live within the budget construct of, of what we are looking at as our rec impact fees. And this is one option to try and get those facilities moving online a little faster than, than where we're at right now, so... But I'm open, I mean, obviously we'll, I can look at, at some additional options for if parking's...
And they're going to be driving in off of Bush Drive?
We would put an entrance off of Bush Drive, yes.
Brush.
Our brush drive.
Brush drive, okay.
Yeah, this is, you know, when we were talking about it earlier, you know, we just paid off the, the loan, the $8 million loan, which we, it was the initial loan to buy the property and do a lot of the initial infrastructure. So we've just paid that off, which was about a $600,000 a year payment. So we, you know, kind of originally thought about, you know, as that got paid off, is to go back to the, to the market, add it with the public safety building and take their eight, which is, equate to about $8 million today that we could go borrow and do all this in a, in a, in a one phase with a bond issue, adding the public safety building to it, whatever that's going to come out to be. But I think maybe this phased approach using the impact fees we've got already in place, you know, makes, makes, you know, great sense. And then we could still do it, you know, bond issue if we wanted to at a later time to do maybe phase two and three, if that's when, you know, we've got the public safety complex ready to, to go to, to, to the market. So that's, you know, we could obviously do a lot more parking. We could do all these, the things, you know, phase two and phase three, you know, any way that you'd like to do it. But that was the kind of the initial thought was that we would borrow the $8 million and do all of this and more, you know, dog park and so all those things that we're going to put into this, into the complex. But this, I mean, this is a great, you know, I think a great start. And then we can, gives us a little more time to, it gets the needs that everybody's been asking about. You know, obviously soccer and tennis have been the two biggest deficiencies with, in pickleball, just because we don't have one and obviously a lot of calls for that. So I think it gets a lot of those, those items that, that people are, you know, were short on. And so this will get us a, a good way that, toward that.
Yeah, and the overall driving force was to speed the process up to try and get some of these additional facilities online faster. So like the mayor said, if, if we get the bond issuance at a certain point, we're in, in phase two, we can maybe do two and three at the same time and through the bond if that's the wish or, or do something else. Or there's funding for another recreation project utilizing the bond issuance.
I'm just going to send all the people that are commenting that they have to drive on grass and dirt to you.
No, I mean, that would be my preference is if you, I mean, you're going to have to create a connection to brush drive anyways. If you're doing that, why aren't you just put the spine road or whatever you want to call it to connect to the parking lot and do it a phased parking lot? But at minimum, have enough parking available for the courts that you plan on doing in phase one.
Yeah, I can look at that. It's just going to, parking lot is going to be, yeah, is a expensive cost to, that could impact, it might split that phase into a little bit more.
But again, it's not throwaway work. And, and again, we could sit up here and argue that it's going to be much more expensive to do it tomorrow than it is today.
Right.
And so I don't think it's throwaway work. It's money that we're going to spend it anyways and cost is just going to go up.
Right.
If we do it two years from now, so...
And are we going to fence this? Is that included?
There would be fencing around the, so each of these squares is a bank of courts. So we would have fencing around those and then likely fencing between these to go ahead and, these little areas to go ahead and make it a facility.
But not fence the entire property?
Not fence the entire, there's already fencing, there's already fencing running along this property line where the, and then this property line.
How's the lighting for that area?
We'd put lighting and then the parking would obviously need some lighting too. But the option to put the courts closer to Jason Dwellie, again, was to keep the courts closer to the existing complex and away from the neighbors as much as possible.
Smart move.
But it's a piece of property that, you know, could fit for this type of facility. So I can, I can get back with the team and work on some additional phasing options or some parking lot, what that might look like in the numbers to, to bring back.
I agree.
And that's the end of my presentation unless you got any questions.
Any last questions for Radley?
Would you be able to provide us with all of this?
I'll send you, I'll make a little edit on the pickleball court number and then I can send that out to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Who's up next? Who's next? Let me see, who's next? General Government.
I want to take a five-minute break.
Yeah, I'm going to take a five-minute break because, um... Thanks. This is General.
Calling the meeting back to order, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Evening Commissioners, Mayor. First, I'm going to start off with the mayor's office budget. And I'll highlight the significant increases and discuss those with you real quick. Personnel costs are pretty much standard. No major changes there other than, so y'all know, overall in the city budget, we did see healthcare increased by an 11.75% increase, and that's been across the board. And all your personnel costs have been absorbing those. With regard to operating, there's a couple of new things in here. One of them was a program that I requested, actually is the Neighborhood Restoration Program. And that's where we'll work with the neighborhood homeowners associations where the associations may be hard pressed for money to renovate their entrance ways or so forth. And what I'm looking at doing there is a 50/50 match type grant, where if they invest 50% of the cost up to, what we would do is basically they could spend $10,000 and we would reimburse up to $5,000. So they have to put something into it. So we're not doing the whole renovation. And that was something that, I'm not taking credit for, that's something that's modeled after the county. The county does something very similar. So we would like to look at those HOAs within our community that are having trouble maintaining their entrance ways and trying to beautify those entrance ways.
Are there specific qualifications that need to be met?
Pardon me?
Specific qualifications that need to be met?
There will be some qualifications done and drawn up when we do that. This is just the initial seed money. If you fund it, then we'll work on meeting and what qualifications have to be done. And they would have to be, you know, nonprofit. It would be a nonprofit type organization. So.
Where's that at in the budget?
That's under the mayor's budget, under the Neighborhood Restoration.
Yeah, right there, Neighborhood Restoration, 25K.
25. So basically, they could ask for up to $5,000. It just depends on how many we get as a request.
Well, I think Commissioner Smith is asking which line item is that falling under?
Oh, that comes out of the operating. It's in the, it would be in the operating.
Yeah, I saw that. But do we have a criteria for that?
That's what we, we got to fund it and then we'll have a criteria.
If you fund it, then we'll create the criteria.
And this will exclude the CRA? Or is that going to include the CRA?
Any neighborhood that has an HOA that needs to, to do some renovation to their entryway. So we're not going to say it has to be in the, in the CRA or outside the CRA. I don't, just speaking off the top of my head, I don't know too many neighborhoods that are actually in the CRA that have monuments or entryways that I can list off the top of my head. We're talking to some of the outer ones like out off of Welch Road. You've got Wingfoot Estates. I noticed their entryway is looking really ragged. So most of them are in the outer areas of the city, not in the core city.
Okay.
Um, the other is some increase for the training in the mayor's office for you and the commissioners. That's a $7,000 hit.
That's not an increase though for this year, right?
There's a slight increase.
Which, line 5500 is showing 7,000 since 2021. 7,000, 7,000, 7,000, 7,000 for 24.
Is that just including like the Florida League of Cities and all that, that, that type of training? We don't spend that much money.
Line 5500.
Let me see something here. So you hit this?
Keep going down.
Yeah, she's, it, the total's going to be seven in travel and training.
But my question, it's not an increase?
No, it's not an increase. You're correct, Commissioner. Then there's some printing services to print the state of the, uh, state of the city booklets, stationary, Black History Month booklets and so forth. And then also some marketing, economic development, marketing material for an amount of $10,000. That will come in that budget there. So overall, the, the mayor's budget's got a slight increase, but the majority of that is going to be trying to fund the restoration program that I've asked for.
For the Economic Development Department or director position, when you say marketing, is that basically engaging a headhunter?
Not for that, no, sir. This would be for booklets and pamphlets to, to market the city in other areas outside of what your Economic Development Department would do.
Does it mean, where am I?
I noticed line, uh, 4,000 went from 11,000 to zero.
That was, we, needs to be fixed.
Which one, Commissioner?
Traveling per diem.
4,000, yeah, that should, should have been 11.
It didn't load.
Is travel and per diem, that's like for our hotel or whatever during?
Hotels, registration expenses, gasoline to go to that event.
So what's the budget? Just, it remains the same?
The budget's 7,000.
No, it's 11, but we got to add it back.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
11,000 for travel.
Yeah, it's 11 plus the seven that she's added in here is what is the total amount's going to be. And again.
I mean, that absolutely go on every single line on here because it's going to.
We, we apologize because we did have problems with Open Go. When they went to open up, when they went to load, it overrode and threw away some of the numbers that we're in from the previous year. And that's what we dealt with over the past couple of days.
Okay.
And what's covered under salaries here? What positions?
It should be the.
Commissioner, say again?
What, what, whose salaries are covered under?
The mayor, the mayor's, the mayor, the mayor's secretary come out of that.
That's it?
The young lady at the front here, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Johanna.
Johanna.
Yeah, I think she may be out of that as well.
Those three?
I think it's those three, but I can get you that detail.
So there's an increase of what, 20,000? For the proposed budget, 20,000 for three?
Personnel costs went up 4%. If I'm looking at it correctly.
Overall personnel went up 4% in that area.
For three positions.
That's an average, yeah. For the two or the three positions, I'll get you the details on who's actually there.
Do we have avail, like in years past, again, from a budgetary perspective, we have, it's a clean breakout of every single resource that's within each fund. Like by position, number of position, how many did we have last year? How many are we going to have this year? Unless you all kind of talk about it, like we don't see it.
I will be going over some of that detail in the summary overview on Wednesday. But I can get you a list of the headcount so you can know the positions per department.
What's other salaries and wages? What does that pertain to? Line 1300.
Things that are not the regular wages, like jury duty, different things like that, special pays.
Oh, I see, other salaries and wages.
There's nothing.
Are you able to give me another example other than that?
I have to see what's being pulled into that category, but it's things that are not the regular pay.
Longevity be in there?
No, I think longevity stands, it stands along, longevity stands.
Longevity is cut in half.
Yeah, longevity stands along, yes.
Last year we doubled it, so we dropped it back to.
It went down to the, the 400 for the longevity, went down.
And so for the, the mayor, his secretary, Mr. Johanna, is it, that's inclusive of a 5% wage increase as well for each of them?
Yes.
Anything else in this department? Next, go over to Legal Services. Got your personnel costs and operating costs. Currently, the salary for the attorney is left in the, the personnel costs. Depending on what happens in the very end, if we decide to go and hire internal again or external, we'll make that decision a little bit later on during the year. I felt it best right now just to leave it with Mr. Shepherd.
Right, you did a one-year contract with him.
It's not a mandatory year. It's, those are fees that are charged monthly. So, you know, as long as we negotiate with him at a time that we want to get out, we can get out and give him notice. But I felt it best right now, we just leave with Commissioner, Commissioner with Mr. Shepherd and see how it goes with that, make sure we can meet your needs and our needs, and then readdress it at a later date.
Okay.
So, so as, as we expend those funds, we may make those transfers from the personnel expense into the operating to cover personnel or correction, professional services, which that's where he would be paid out of in the operating expenses, just so you know. The big highlight to this budget is the increase in insurance. And what we're seeing on an average to all our policies is a 10 to 15% increase, with the exception of the property insurance. And property insurance is seen as a 60% increase overall. I did ask the risk manager, or the lady that works in risk management, was it directly related to anything for us? And she said no, that we're part of the Florida League of Cities Municipal Trust Fund. And it's the fund as a whole, it's how the rates are calculated. We're not the only one that's seeing a big increase. I understand there's another city in Orange County that's seen an 80% increase in their property insurance. And I think it's indicative of what you're seeing in your home insurance. I know mine have gone up tremendously, and I'm sure y'alls have too. And we're just subject to that same situation. So that's, that's the biggest hit we're seeing. With regard to the stop-loss policy that I spoke about a couple of weeks ago, dealing with the workman's comp, we are still waiting for FMIT to give us some figures if we would be saving to have a stop-loss policy versus the hit that we had to take in that one situation. But as soon as we, we know that, then we'll know where to go from there. But other than that, that's, there's not any significant changes of this area. Any questions?
Travel, per diem, freight and postage. Rental and leases, what is, what is that? I mean.
Rental and leases?
Yeah.
Rental and leases are for like the copy machine, that kind of stuff, that's.
And repairs and maintenance, only $150? What is that for?
Repairs and maintenance would be for, for small things that would be repaired.
Like?
Internal things, like the building would be facility maintenance. But if they had to repair, for instance, the copy machine has a, a contract to cover certain things. But if it goes above and beyond, then we're responsible for those expenses too. We used to, we used to pay a, a total of all the, our copy machines were previously on a lease. We've actually, last year came off of that. Now we're 100% responsible for all repairs. But we're no longer paying large fees for leases and so forth on copy machines. But there are areas within that department that have certain things that have been leased and repaired.
How many copying machines do we own?
It, it's a shared one between HR and this department. So you've got a copy machine up there that's in this department. You got one over with Susan in her department. And then you've got over in Community Development, one that they share over there. But this affects, it's a split between HR and Legal Services. Rob gives us a number to calculate it off of, and that's what we do.
So when did we get rid of the leasing of that equipment?
Leasing was last year, year before last.
So they came off lease. You can still lease the machines, but they came off of lease. So the machines are still fully functional. It was a viable machine, have you purchased the machines?
Because I still see a, on our monthly dispersment report, I still see payments made for printer leases.
Some of them are, some of them still have leases on them.
Depending on where they're at in the city.
Lease, yeah.
There still may be some active leases. Not all of them are active.
Okay.
Like another one in the, the city admin's office, that one's come off lease. This one upstairs has come off lease. But now she's got one in her department that's leased. It's a newer machine.
Okay.
Anything in this area? And then the last one is going to be Admin Services. And with the absence of Edward, and until such time as that position is filled, you really don't see any major impact to that budget. It's pretty flat. There was a small reduction in the travel and expenses. There was a small reduction in the travel and expenses. But outside of that, there's no major changes in that budget. Any questions?
I'm just, I'm reserving all of my questions and detailed things until we can see the underlying. What comprises each one of these?
Sure. And that, I'll turn it over blank. Or Susan, Susan.
Same as one coming here.
Yeah. Where's the city clerk's office, oh, here it is.
Let's see if I can figure this out here. Okay, so our budget this year has had a five percent increase. Some of that had to do with the salary merit increases. We had an increase in our, our, the biggest increase was line forty-seven hundred. We had seen a, an increase in the municipal code where we were passing all the ordinances. We had to put the ones over there and, and, you know, had additional, we didn't have enough money allocated in that line. So that usually is, so it's the cost of printing services for that. The other was the, the, a, a reduction in line forty-two, forty-nine oh two, that was the advertising. And some of that we haven't recognized yet because we're going to be able to advertise online some, so. And we hadn't met the seventy-five hundred, so I lowered that. And then the.
What line, what line are you referring to?
That is forty-nine oh two, that's for the advertising.
Forty-nine oh two, where am I? Oh, here I am, okay. Okay.
And then the line thirty-four hundred is up just a little bit. We have, I have, it's, that's the election line, but we're not, you know, we're doing the piggyback this coming year. So, but I still have, you know, there's always, we have shredding in there, we have storage of microfilm in the state of Florida. We have a little in that for that. And then we have potential election needs, like if there's, you know, needed to be a special election or anything, you know. So I have that in there. But that was also reduced, you know, in twenty-twenty-two, it was forty-five. And so we, we reduced it to thirteen. But then we, we did raise it up just because the, the store, the shredding went up, the storage, you know, we're, we're just. I'm keeping a little bit in there just in case, you know, we have some of those election costs that we might.
Why, why was twenty-twenty-two forty-five thousand and then?
Because we had the, that was the, the election that we stood, a standalone election.
Oh, okay, that's the one in March?
Yeah, we paid for the early boating over at the, you know, so we had, we had some additional expenses on that year.
So in twenty-twenty-four, we're going to also have?
No, because we're piggybacking off the presidential primary.
On that?
On that, mhm.
Oh, okay. And other than that, let me see then.
It's pretty flat.
Printing services.
Many questions for Susan?
Volume that you're experiencing in terms of public records requests, I mean, do you have staff, is that sustainable for you?
It.
Well, I guess really anchor it into, are you properly staffed knowing what the, the requests that you have coming in? To make sure that we're in accordance with what state law says, that turnaround time and all that stuff.
So there's not really a standard turnaround time, it's, it's within a reasonable time. We have had a couple of really large requests, but I've turned those around. I have, you know, we get the daily, you know, request for, for little things. But for the majority of it, we do charge now for, for the requests that, you know, take over a certain amount. And that's per statute, we're allowed to do that. And so we have, some people are, they might come back to us and say, hey, you know, let me just scale that down a little bit. No, I won't, I don't want everybody's email, I just want whatever. So, so we've kind of, you know, saved a little bit of time on that. But personnel-wise, I, I think we have, I mean, I, I, I feel like we have sufficient staff. I, I know that sometimes it, it becomes an issue with, with some that people are crying about wanting to have their public records fulfilled a little bit sooner, but we don't really have, I mean, we do it as they come in. And I think it's going a lot better now that we have the public records software online and things are, are starting to come together a little bit.
So you had, for the summer, you had the summer help. And I remember the young lady was very busy. What was she doing that will not be getting done now without her?
She was taking the old card file from the cemetery and scanning all of those old records in. Because some of those old records had not, like, we have some files from the old sections that for one reason or another, there wasn't a deed in the file for that particular cemetery plot. But we have, we had them in the index card file. So we're trying to consolidate everything, scan it in, put it all into the system so that everything that we possibly have with regard to that ownership of the cemetery plot or whoever is interred there is, is available. So she was taking all those cards, and it was really, you know, just little tiny index cards and scanning all of it. So she did a really good job on that.
So are we done with that or?
No, we still have, we still have a couple of sec, sections left to do. Because what was happening is it was getting backed up with her scanning, because we were scanning into a file. And then the girls were pulling them and putting them into the proper burial plot space. So, so once, once we got all that caught up, it was, she only was here for three weeks. So it didn't, you know, it, she kept very busy for those three weeks.
So the staff that you have right now, I know they do the minutes, what else do they do?
Cemetery, we do, they do the lean searches, so.
So will some, one of them continue to do what the summer staff was doing?
Yeah, so as she gets the rest of those incorporated into the laser fish system, then she'll start working on the next drawer. So it's not something that had to be done immediately, it was something that we, we did so, as a precautionary thing. So that we have all the, the most accurate records we can have.
Okay. So you're satisfied with the staff that you have?
I, yeah, I, I feel like we all are, we talked, we discussed it and, and I think everybody, like, they all have their own jobs. And we all kind of work together to get everything done, so, you know, for right now, it's, it's working okay. And I think we're good.
Any other questions for Susan?
I noticed also in your budget for travel and per diem, it also went from fifteen hundred to zero.
Oh, yes, we, we already discussed that.
All right.
I'm sorry.
It used to be where you put, if you didn't put anything to change, it would just keep.
Old and quiet.
Yeah.
This new system, it wipes out anything that you didn't put a number in, so it's been a, it's been a.
So they're aware of it, they're gonna fix it.
And then in reference to, to salaries, I know there was a salary survey that was done for the clerk's office. The salaries that I see here, six hundred and seventy-seven thousand, is that in line with what everybody else is doing?
Commissioner, the citywide, we're seeing where the city as a whole needs to have a salary survey. In the, in HR's budget, there is some money put to do a salary survey citywide. And I say that because there's not a department that's not running into a deficiency of where our salaries sit in comparison to the, the job market in central Florida. So all the departments with the funding, we hope that's in the HR budget will have a salary survey to see where we're in the job market and where we compare to the other cities that we compete with.
And do we have a timeline as to when that's gonna be done?
Well, if you fund it, if you fund it, it will start October one. I am working to get a price so I can hit that date. And if I can work with Blanche and we can squeeze it out this year, I'll try to get it going even sooner.
All right.
Okay, okay. Anything else?
I'd like to see it faster than later, sooner than later.
Is finance or HR?
Y'all bettered on this thing than, I am so. So we're doing finance now? I'm trying. Rob, can you pull the thing back up? Oh, weird.
She broke it.
I didn't break. Bottom chrome? Okay, go back, okay. Y'all better. Finance, here we go. So overall. Overall in finance, we basically are dealing with a status quo budget. The only thing that I've added or requesting is three new positions. An accountant, three, a purchasing administrator, and a senior budget analyst. And I've added the cost for the investment advisor, that forty-five K.
I'm sorry, purchasing administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
And?
An accountant, three.
Oh, here it is, I'm sorry, I'm looking at, I'm not, I'm looking at it and I'm asking you.
And a senior budget analyst. So basically, that is the, the primary changes for the finance budget. Three new positions and adding the cost of the financial advisor. Do I need the staff? Yes. Desperately.
Any questions for Blanche? Okay.
Okay, let me go ahead and go to the next.
Last but not least.
I got one more, utility billing, let me try to get to that. Know more about this thing than me. And with the utility billing section, again, just a slight increase for our popco newsletter that we print out. And just a slight decrease in this, in the salaries and wages overall. Again, we had some savings in that regard, but again, overall, there's an increase, I don't know why they.
So the salaries went down from three ninety-two, from three ninety-two K to three twenty-five, why?
New hires coming in, probably less saving money.
How many clerks do you have at the front desk in the utility?
It is, I think, four clerks. Let me see, Amanda, about four clerks, specialists. And a manager.
They don't do any overtime, do they, at the utility?
When we're short staffed, they do, but that's about it.
What improvements has line sixty-three hundred, improvements other than buildings for sixty thousand?
The only thing that we were planning to do was some renovations, but.
Split that office.
Because we have limited space, no space, so we're thinking about taking that conference room and, and making some office space. To share with IT.
I'm sure they have enough space.
Okay.
No, they, we can't wait to get, IT can't wait to get out and.
But this is tower meters.
Spread out.
But this is, this is, I would have to go get the details, but that's one of the things that we want to do. But this is says for some towers and, and the meters, that's the description on it. Okay.
All right, in reference to the, the newsletter. Is it possible to print activities that take place at the amphitheater that are not city-sponsored? Like the concerts that are not city-sponsored, is it possible? Because I, I've had people that, that live in Rock Springs Ridge, for instance, well, in rural states as well, that they hear the music going, but it, but since it's not a city event, it's not posted anywhere. So they would have attended.
Let me, I'll, I'll try to answer that one. So what we're, what we're trying to do is this amphitheater becomes more, a lot more popular, and we get these outside venues to come in. What we're trying to do is, is having an amphitheater, we have right now, we already have that amphitheater tab, which will show not only our, our Saturday sounds events, but these paid events. So what we're trying to do is come up with a, a plan, like a bronze and then like a platinum package. For the outside vendor, we, we would have a, a card that would go out on one month, would be in January, would list all the events, including our, our Saturday sounds and, and paid events. The other, the other flip side would be February's events. And so we will, we'd like to do that, but what we want to try to do is partner with these outside venues. They would, they would help us pay for that extra card that would go in your utility billing as a, as a, as an insert. So every two months, you'd get a new, a new insert.
Okay.
And it'd be January, February, March and April, you know, so that's what we're, we're trying to do out of Parks and Rec Department.
Okay. And then they would help pay for that advertising?
Exactly.
Okay.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
All right, so we, it's, Z comes the last load in the outfit, right?
Yes.
Yes, Sandra, you're last. It's that number, there you are.
Okay, so what are we doing?
Thank you. Good afternoon, yeah, evening.
Okay, utility, uh, finances.
So my name is Xandra, and I'm from Human Resources, and I'm standing in for Joe in his absence. So one thing I wanted to mention that earlier when we were talking about the economic development director. Excuse me, Joe did text me and say that we've actually been looking at those other sites that was recommended from the Winter Garden Director. And that we will be posting to some of those sites. And he thinks the one that you mentioned, Commissioner Becker, I think was the Florida Economic Development.
Florida Economic Development Council.
Yes, and he thinks that, that's one of the ones that was mentioned by that director that we will be posting that position to. And as well, he mentioned that that director is retiring, I don't know if you're aware, but.
Yeah, so they, they have their own position posted for.
Yeah, so we'll be competing with, with that posting as well. Okay. So, excuse me.
And it's posted on that council's job posting, that's where I saw it.
Oh, okay. Okay, so Human Resources. So it looks like personnel costs, it was a slight decrease.
Not according to those numbers.
I'm sorry?
Not according to that. One says four fifty-two, another says four sixty-four, that's an increase.
Should be a plus three instead of a minus three.
It says.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize, must be in an increase.
It's plus three, yeah.
So, and anyway, in, excuse me, some of the highlights that I wanted to talk about is basically, like Chuck mentioned earlier, there's a citywide increase of eleven point seven five percent in healthcare. And this is reflected in each department's personnel's cost. Then when we look at operating expenses, and we look at other contractual services. So the HR department is actually looking to purchase their own fingerprint scanner. So currently, excuse me, we partner with the police department when it comes to fingerprinting. So we fingerprint, of course, all of our new hire applicants. We fingerprint the volunteers, volunteer coaches as well. So we were looking at print, trying to obtain our own fingerprint scanner because currently what we've had to do since we added additional staff in the last November, one of our HR specialists won. She actually trained down at the police department here within the last couple of months before we really kicked off the volunteers, I think in December, I mean, in January. So she actually went down to the police department and did some training. So now we have her going down there because we had such an increase in volume with fingerprints. She went down, trained. So basically what she was doing, because the police department was, there was a lot of scheduling conflicts and tried to get our folks fingerprinted because they, they also fingerprint, not only for us, but other agencies. And so Jackie went down, trained, and so what Jackie was doing, she goes down there a couple of hours, maybe once to twice. It's kind of slowed down a little bit, but especially when we were getting ready to hire our summer camp staff as well. So she was going down for a couple of hours to do those fingerprints. And when she's down there, of course, that takes away, she's the main person that answers our main line in the department. And so it was just really come, kind of time-consuming. And so we were looking to, if we can have our own fingerprint scanner in HR, bringing internal.
How much is that scanner?
Um, it is, he's budgeting. Sorry, fingerprint. Actually, I don't know if we've actually.
It's listed.
Sorry. Fingerprint.
Is that equipment machinery?
I'm sorry? Oh, there it is, sorry. It looks like ten thousand. Mm-hmm.
It has to be an approved device by FDLE commissioners.
Yeah, I was gonna say, does that have to get certified?
Nothing comes cheap on the police side.
Yep. Does that scanner have to get certified as?
It has to meet all the FDLE security requirements.
And so the person that will be doing the fingerprinting, does that person have to be certified or is it?
All the staff in HR, because they're, they have access to police records, have to meet FDLE security requirement.
Certified, oh, okay.
So every one of the employees in HR meet those requirements.
Mm-hmm, okay. So we'll all share that responsibility. So the next thing is the ACA reporting requirement. The vendor that we are currently using is no longer doing the reporting because of the increased requirements and we're looking into a new vendor that have, basically, we've did a demo with a couple of them and they provided us with the costs associated with meeting those requirements for ACA purposes. Okay. Under operating supplies, a high-speed scanner. So we actually have a, a part-time person that's currently doing our scanning of all of our files. So we are actually wanting to go to digital, a, a more digital platform with a lot of the old personnel files because currently the retention rate is fifty years, actually fifty-plus on some of them for the retention of personnel files.
Fifty years?
Yes. So we're looking to get a scanner to scan all of our old personnel files.
What laminating is that?
That is.
What section does it follow?
Uh, operating supplies. So, high-speed scanner. It's like forty-eight hundred dollar adjustment.
Okay.
Okay. And lastly is training. Training has increased and we're looking to do additional citywide training on different subject matters, areas such as like sexual harassment training, workplace violence training, and leadership training. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Xandra?
The other thing that she didn't cover, just so you know, is, is, is that wage and salary and benefit study is in their budget too? So that's a, a big increase in there.
Okay.
In the training budget, do you have outside agencies to come in to do that training or?
Uh, yes, I think Joe is looking for other, other outside training. I know there's one, like, electronic, like, video-type training that we can do for, especially like the sexual harassment and workplace violence, platform, like a library that we will have access to and that we can push out to staff electronically.
Commissioner, we use a program called Power DMS. The police department and the fire department have used it for years. And part of that platform allows for us to push canned training out in certain subject matters, like how to use a chainsaw, a whole variety of library of things. And so we can stay consistent from employee to employee. We will use a video platform and then it also records and acknowledges that they took the training and they've read and signed the policies. And that's been very successful at the police department and they've used it for years and that's why we want, that's why we want to institute it citywide.
Okay. How does HR handle when employees have a complaint?
When they have, when they have a complaint?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. So basically, when an employee has a complaint, they come to us, we ask them to put it in a written form, format. And so I know that an investigation is done by, mainly by Joe of all parties involved. So there's meetings that he scheduled with each individual that's involved.
Some of that'll go back to the director of that department, depending on who's involved in it. So if it's a director, then he would do the direct investigation. If it's not the director, then the department would be responsible for doing the initial and making sure that they followed the city policy as far as did, did the person violate the city policy. But on a director's side, Joe's responsible. Joe would do anything affecting the director or if it's classified in the sexual harassment classification, that comes to HR. But if it's a complaint less than the director, it goes back to each department to investigate that particular complaint.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
The only thing with, with that is when someone comes in and files a grievance and there's an investigation, at any time, is there sort of a sensitivity program or a class or something that may be required for either the one who puts in a grievance or the one who's, you know, accused of, in the grievance to say, okay, they need some special training, sensitivity training, whatever it is. I mean, we just kind of resolve it or, and then that's the end of it? Like, do we follow up with that?
If it's ID'd as a particular violation of the city policy, then either the director, if it's at the director's level that did the investigation, or if Joe was deemed that the director needs additional training, they can make those recommendations and do that to the employee. And that's a case-by-case basis based on the final outcome of the investigation.
Okay.
Now, there is, again, to be clear, Joe is working on bringing in additional training into the city. We do know that there are areas that need to be covered and that's been his goal, is to add additional training citywide to hit certain areas or certain topics that need to be covered on a citywide level.
So right now, we don't have that in place?
Currently, it has not been in place, no, ma'am. Now, each department, again, I know the police department, I can speak very highly of how it's handled, is if we identify based on the investigation that there needs to be additional training to that employee, they would be sent. And that's the same pattern that I followed with Joe when Joe's come to me with certain issues and that they've been founded because a complaint would be, as you're aware, a founded complaint or an unfounded complaint. If it's a founded complaint, then we would look at the training to see if that, this individual that was complained on needs to have that additional training.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, Xandra?
Just the, the last thing, once again, I notice there's a zero for repairs or maintenance. You don't have any.
They don't have much up there, to be honest with you, Commissioner.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. The only, they have a copy machine. That's it. Most of their equipment is, is a computer and that's IT's.
Well, with the new fingerprint machine, they may have some maintenance.
They may next year. You may see something next year.
All right.
That will fall under contract maintenance.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, Blanche, first thing in the morning, if you could get police, fire, and IT's, the, the complete financial detail for the commissioner, you get them out first just because they'll be, at least you'll, you know, if we can get it out before lunch, at least they'll have, you know, five hours to take a look at those before they get here, so. And then obviously do Wednesdays soon thereafter.
We'll get those out, but we're working to get them all.
Yeah, I mean, and one of the biggest things too is, it would be helpful because all we're talking about is, again, is one side of the ledger here. We're talking about expense only. So at a high level, what, what are we marching towards? Like, the, the budget that you've got draft form that you're presenting, are we balanced? Are we gonna have surplus? Are we upside down? Because I, I want to have a frame of reference because, again, we've got some behemoths coming tomorrow in terms of budget, our largest share. You know, what is, where are we at?
Okay, we're balanced with the use of reserves, is capital reserves. Just like you noticed in the FY twenty-two act for, we did have some funds set aside that were assigned for capital improvements in the future and to deal with our carryovers as well. So we are, we do have a balanced budget, but we do have that with the use of reserves for capital improvements.
How much reserve?
About eight million, actually.
Or balancing with eight million?
Yes, in capital reserves. I can give you that detail.
Uh-huh, okay.
Yeah, you know, some of the things that Radley mentioned with his, his lighting, the five hundred and fifty thousand, that's a part of it.
On, on the enterprise that we have, do we have what their balances are right now, what we have in these, like, the transportation, the water? So what do we have? One of the things I would like to know, and it's been my experience, is that when we come into a new budget year, we have some state mandated that we have to do. And so I want to make sure, do we have the, the funds for those, anything that the state is mandating that we have to do and that we haven't done in any of these fiscal years?
I think that conversation will happen on Wednesday with Public Services.
Okay.
But we've added those improvements. I mean, you, you are the one that mentioned to me, you notice how the spending is not occurring. They're not as, you know, spending as much as they're budgeting for. So we tried to streamline the budgets to make sure that we're not carryover, carryover, carryovering funds that they don't need, okay? In addition, because they can't get it all done. So we're giving time for them to get some of these projects that they've started to get those projects completed. And then we'll look out for some new projects, you know, in, in the future.
So do we have, like, what we have in those funds? I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
And you said that'll be on the Wednesday one?
Yes, I'll include that in overview.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can have a high level, just what our revenues are looking like. Because I want to, because again, I want to, I want to see the assumptions because, again, the CRA budget was flat. It didn't account for any sort of increase in revenues. And so I want to make sure that we're all aligned, thinking the same thing, the trends and revenue assumptions, just so that we're all.
And, and, and that's driven by the, the CRA committee, yes, and the way that he budgeted. We are expecting some increases there, but to balance the budget, it was taken down.
All right, any other questions for Blanche? All right. See y'all back tomorrow at five.